I'm trying to move through this agenda in two hours. It's a pretty hefty agenda, but I'd like us to try to shoot for that goal so we can start this special meeting at nine. So Zach, you are up with the 2014 tentative budget. And please be reminded that in this special meeting, we will need to take action on just making sure that this gets posted tomorrow so that it's out there for 30 days for the public to look at before we have to take action on it.
All right, thank you. I'll start with the presentation for the tentative budget. All right, you probably can't read it, but just trying to let you know where we're at, at what point we're at with the calendar. At the last meeting, we did the overall bird's eye view of the budget. And today, at our finance committee meeting, we're going to do the budget presentation in detail. And then hopefully have the tentative budget approved at the special meeting, and then it'll be put on a public display for 30 days, beginning August 13th. All right, and here's the overall performance of the district for 2014. I showed this last time, I'm just going to show it again. You can see our fund balances have decreased overall by 2.0, almost 2.2 million. Majority of that decrease was the result of the payments for the construction projects and the payments for debt. Any questions on the outcome of 2014?
These are actuals.
Actuals, unaudited.
And those numbers will become audited in the fall?
Correct. And there hasn't been adjustments in the past, so the likelihood that those numbers will change, that they probably will, that's probably the final numbers. Okay, our next slide is our budgeted revenues and expenditures for 2015. You can see we're going to have an overall decrease of 1.8 million. We don't have the big construction payout this year, or for next year, but we do continually have the debt service payment of 1.4 million. That comes out of the ad fund and goes into debt service. And you'll see that our revenues are going to be less than last year due to not having an increase in levy. And another piece of that is the state made five payments this year. They made all of 2014 payments and one of 2013, which were due. They never make, well, they're caught up, they're finally caught up. So next year, the most will get us for a payment, so there'll be a difference in revenues from the state.
And then Zach, can you just note to the board the capital projects number when we aren't really having any capital, more capital projects, and why that balance is there?
Oh, okay. You can see we still have a fund balance of almost 900,000 in capital projects. The board approved 25.5 million. That was going to come out of operation and maintenance and ad fund to pay for the construction, for the renovation projects. We came in under budget. I transferred only 25 million. I left 500, a little over 500,000 still in the ad fund that could be used for capital projects. That 800, that 900,000 in fund balance for capital projects is there to, we still have to do the window project at Blythe, replace the windows, depending on whichever solution we're able to do. If we're able to use aluminum, the cost is going to be 300,000. If we have to use the same material, we're looking at close to $1 million. So I left that balance in there in order to pay for the Blythe windows.
So this is, this 891 number, that's in addition to the 500,000 that's still in the education fund?
No, that's, there's still 500,000 in ad fund that hasn't been transferred to capital projects, that could be.
Okay, so 1.4.
Right.
On the 2015, again, can you explain the revenues? To what degree their estimates?
On the revenue side, at least for property tax, my estimates are based on max levy, getting max levy for 2015.
So that would be for the six months of 2015?
It'll be six months, right, correct, six months at no increased levy, and then six months at max.
So, so half of them, can we say that there's, half of them are actual and half of them are estimates?
Yes.
Assuming, assuming max levy?
Yes.
Okay. So, all right, so it's actual for the remainder of 2014, and an estimate, assuming max for 2015?
Correct.
Okay.
In the next slide, and we've gone through this several times.
And I'm just going to ask one question on 2015, on expenditures. They are actuals with regard to salaries?
Salaries, benefits are estimated, some of the benefits are estimated.
Yeah, assuming that, you know, that the same people are on staff.
Correct. Okay. Okay, the revenue, the ad fund revenue, revenues consist of your local property tax, corporate replacement tax, earnings on investments, school fees and tuitions, food service sales, state sources, which is general state aid, special ed, TPI, bilingual education, state free lunch, and the federal sources are Title I, II, and III, national school lunch program, special milk, special ed idea flow-through, and Medicaid matching. And I've only listed on, the next three slides are operating revenues. With the exception of transportation, the other, the other funds are mainly local property tax and earnings on investments. As you can see here for tour, for operations and maintenance, transportation, the additional source of revenue comes from transportation for special ed. And I R F is, again, property tax and earnings on investments. This is the revenues for all funds, broken up by categories. We have the property tax, revenues from other units, which is the corporate replacement tax, tuition, earnings on investments, food service, pupil activities, which are activity fee, athletic fees, registration, other local revenues, which are building rentals, state grants, and federal grants. And you can see where overall revenues are going to be 10.43% less than last year.
So the increases in food service and pupil activities, is that just driven by enrollment?
Pupil activities is actually
Or is it?
Going decreasing. The, I think you're looking at registration.
I'm going to go wrong.
Our registration went down too, but food service will go up. And that's based on, with our increase in meal costs. I anticipate it'll, you know, we'll have some kind of increase in food service.
Why is registration down?
Well, this year, in fiscal year 14, we made an effort to collect as due fees. So we sent out letters, kept sending out letters saying this balance is due, this balance is due. So we collected more than we normally have in the past. So a lot of the
Oh, so the 2013, 2014 reflects
Right.
Because of the collection activity.
And then we anticipate it will be back to normal collections
Okay.
Next year. Good question.
Oh, wait, but why wouldn't, why wouldn't it say, I mean, if you still have those notices put out, why wouldn't it
We collected a lot of the
Past or past years?
Interrears, the interrears, right?
Right.
Wow, okay.
Sometimes
So just like with the state transportation funds, you know, we get a bump up this year, but we'll get back to normal now?
Correct.
And is there a process going forward to hopefully not have as many interrears?
At the beginning of the year, we won't even wait till, we send notices right away. And we'll send them on a daily basis. Salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies and materials, capital outlay, non-capitalized equipment, debt service, I R F, and capital projects. You can see there's, and I'll explain them in the next slides, there's huge increases in benefits, supplies and materials, capital outlay, and a huge decrease, obviously, in capital projects because of the renovations. Ad fund. Again, ad fund has salaries for administrative certified staff, non-certified staff, substitute salaries and stipends. Benefits consist of TRS, THIS, health and life insurance, unemployment benefits, grad school reimbursements, and early retirement incentives. Purchase services, mainly staff development, repair and maintenance. Supplies, textbooks, class materials, periodicals, copy paper, technology supplies, and elementary student supplies. Capital equipment, again, laptops, iPads, projectives, furniture, servers, and then other objects that membership dues entities.
What's under purchase services there under education? I didn't see this.
Staff development, repair and maintenance, copy release.
Okay. Where do, like, field trips and stuff work in?
It goes in purchase services, but it's usually a wash, because what we collect from, we do charge for field trips, so whatever they collect, we pay the service just once.
Would transportation for field trips would not be in that number, right? Or would it be in purchase services?
Some, some of the field trips is in there, but trips, for example, for athletics, the gifted, that goes under transportation.
Straight transportation, so if it's an academic, if it's a field trip, to his point, the transportation for the field trip would go under a purchase service?
Correct.
Okay.
This slide is to show the history, this is the last five years. And you can see the biggest drop, and I'll explain that later, is purchase services. And that's a combination of special ed, reduction in special ed for the LANSI portion, which moves up in actual salaries because we hired a number of staff that we were using LANSI for, brought them in internally. And then we have a number of special ed students that have reached the age of 15 and are now are under R B's services. Overall salaries increased 10 and a half percent. Biggest increase is in certified staff and in the district secretaries, and also IT technicians, percentage wise, those are the ones, percentage.
And that's, that's due to new hires more than anything else?
Yes, and it'll be explained in the, it's correct in the next slide. And here we go. Certified salaries increased by approximately 1.32 million, approximately 900,000 that is due to 15 new certified staff that were hired. Here's the LANSI part, six from LANSI, three RTI, two ELL, one ECE, one library information specialist, one special ed teacher, and one new fourth grade teacher. The remaining 420,000, which is about 5.8%, are normal expected increases due to contract raises and labor movements.
Only, only one, one regular curriculum staff increase, otherwise it's all specials?
Well, RTI, I don't, would you consider RTI special? Or would you consider?
Yeah.
Well, and they're all like acquired as far as
Required, sure, sure.
Yeah, absolutely. So like, all of LANSI's are related services. RTI we're required to do, ELL we're required to do, the ECE we're required to do.
Right.
The library information specialist, we did add, that was increase in FTEs as well as the fourth grade teacher and the special ed was
I just noticed that it's an example of us, we're broadening the breadth of our district of the services being provided, strengthening that bench.
Why is the fourth grade teacher
RTI reflects math, right?
Yes.
RTI reflects math, yes.
Okay.
Fourth grade teacher was the increase at Ames.
Okay. Why was, why did fourth grade increase? Sorry.
Third grade.
Because third grade was three sections going into two sections of fourth grade. So they're going into three, like, right now, there was only two sections of fourth grade at Ames, now there'll be three. There's this, it was three, three, three.
Yeah, but we have, yeah, but we didn't get to shrink somewhere else, obviously, so because
But then down to second grade. We didn't lose a class, it was reorg, like, it was moved down to second.
Yeah, okay.
Paraprofessional salaries decreased by 138,000 due to reduction of 30 part-time positions, which are approximately 16,000 each, which were replaced with 15 full-time paraprofessionals at approximately 23,000 each.
And I just want to point this out, because I know Rachel had a question about this last time. So we were saying that 15 full-time paraprofessionals, looking at this, rather than doing like 30 part-times, because we're required, like, when we looked at I E Ps, we do need to hire 15 more back.
15 more full-time back?
We need to hire 15 positions back, so we can either hire 30 part-times, which is the number out there, or 15 full-times.
Is the number that, that's up there, the total 345,000, does that, that does not include benefits or pension contributions?
No.
How much does that add to the bill? Because that's something that would not be an issue for part-time, correct?
Correct.
All right. So how much does that add total?
I actually have that, that spreadsheet in the management reports.
All right. Do you know what the approximate number was offhand?
I think total, it would have been, total increase would have been, I believe that was 80,000, is the difference?
80,000 more.
Eighty, eighty, eighty-eight thousand more if we hired 15 full-time.
Right, which we're discussing at the upcoming special meeting, right? All right. Because I do, I do think Rachel brings up some good points, and some we'll have to discuss and, you know, try and look at the overall cost of adding to
So that's just an offset off of the, the decrease of 138. So you see a decrease in total salaries for paraprofessionals for salaries.
That's just for salaries.
You see an increase in benefits of 88,000.
No, increase in benefits and more, the overall increase would be 88,000. So ignore that, if you're taking
Okay, if you just ignore this?
Yeah, and you look at the benefits plus
Plus salaries, it'd be 88.
Some grant money we get for having full-time, special ed.
All right.
So wait a minute, you confused me now.
Wait, I'll, I'll try, so in going, going full-time, 15 full-time paraprofessionals will add $88,000 addition to our budget because of healthcare benefits, pension payments?
As opposed of hiring 30 part-time, yes.
Okay.
I still don't, so the 138,000 and savings
That's just the salary.
Goes away, though, there's no savings.
No, to paying 88,000 more.
There's no savings in total. And salaries is, I'm showing, because we're talking salaries only, I'm showing why salaries decrease for paraprofessionals.
No, no, I understand what you're, I'm just trying to understand in my head.
Overall, it would be an additional cost of 88,000.
So the bottom line budget impact is 88,000 more if we go hard time versus full-time?
Correct.
No, backwards, full-time versus hard time. Sorry.
And we're discussing this at the next meeting, then? All right.
Right.
We need 15 positions, and then you, we need 15 FTEs, and it'll be up to the board if you want to do 30 part-times or 15 full-times.
Why do we need 15 again?
Because Of the I E Ps.
They require full-time positions?
They require assistance, so whether it's classroom assistance or one-on-one assistance. And then what we did last year, we riffed on, so we said we would only bring them back according to needs. So we evaluated all the I E Ps per building, per school, and that's when Mrs. Shaw met with all the principals.
Right, so, so we need 15.
Right.
And it's up to us to decide full-time or part-time.
Correct.
So would we be able to, did we lay off 30 in the, sorry, yes, in the spring?
29.
We laid down 29, okay. So we'd be able to bring everybody back, instead of part-time?
Well, yes, if performance relates, their performance.
Well, no, that's strictly, I think it's rip only, isn't, so performance should not
We didn't, we didn't reduce anybody due to performance, it was all
Okay, I'm sorry, I take that back.
And so what, am I also hearing that we have not yet seen a savings in the number of par, full-time equivalent paraprofessionals? So basically, we had 30 part-timers last year, and we're going to need 30 part-time this year, or 15 full-time equivalent?
But we're also adding, we're adding two of the cross-categorical, which is the modified instructional program, we're adding one more early childhood, two more sections. So we're increasing our program and keeping the A's the same. So we may have reduced the number of students, of, excuse me, of paraprofessionals that are needed in the classroom, but we've added more programs with the same number of A's.
So can, you can use paraprofessionals in that ECE category?
Right.
And in that cross-categorical?
In the modified instructional.
So they, they don't have to be teachers?
No, we need certified teachers, but we also need paraprofessionals to support those programs, because those are students with I E Ps in those programs.
Are all of our paraprofessionals certified?
I don't know, I think the majority of them are, I don't, I don't know if they're all certified.
Okay, we can talk about that in the next meeting, I just don't, all right.
I don't know if it's on the management
Hey, there, we saved ourselves 10 minutes in the special
We don't what?
We saved ourselves 10 minutes of conversation, hopefully, at the special meeting.
We'll make up the loss.
Zach, I just have kind of a, kind of a quick question about label, one of the labels here. On the, I think, two slides prior, where it says, education fund budget expenditures, 2013, 2014, you say unaudited budget. And I'm seeing a total of 19,019,393, but I'm flipping over to the 2014 slide way in the front, and that says actual. So I'm wondering, I guess my question is, is the
The way, the, I'm sorry, it should have been unaudited actual is what the question
Okay, because I am trying, I am trying to compare what we budgeted versus what it came in at.
That's my mistake, sorry about that.
And, and, okay. Should just be actual, it's not a, but, this was, this is a
Unaudited actual.
Unaudited actual.
Unaudited, yeah.
Okay.
It's not about this number. Just tie it in.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the next, we have an increase of 46,000 in district secretary salaries, and that's a result of correctly recording district staff salaries to their appropriate funds. What we noticed was that there were some district staff salaries that were put into O N M, which should have been all ad fund.
Sure, I'm sorry, what's O N M again? I'm sorry, operations and maintenance?
Operations and maintenance. And the reason why it may have been done that way is because in the past, the worst staff that did some work with operations and maintenance.
Wasn't that what Pearl's position was to support that area?
Yes.
That must be the reason.
And, and, for example, Sue was, Sue's salary, she was with O N M, and so did O N M.
But
But now they're strictly district and fund.
But we actually have had an increase in secretarial as well.
Yes.
Okay.
What is the thought process behind going from O E M to add?
Just to
Just to keep them all together?
Yes.
Keep all the secretaries together and to add to one fund?
Correct.
Okay.
But there's a portion of it in O N M still, right?
No.
Or no, you moved, so even though Pearl supports O N M, she's now all in
No, she's all in O N M.
So there's a piece of, the sta, the secretarial staff that supports O N M is in O N M, and the secretarial staff that supports education is in education, right?
Like, last year, we could have recorded, or, sorry, two years ago, we could have recorded Sue's salary as in O N M because the superintendent did the O N M duties. And now that we've divided that, Sue's just doing pure
Now that we what?
Now that we've divided that, and we have a director of operations, finance
Divided that responsibility?
Right.
Right, well, now Sue's just reporting to the superintendent, and now Pearl is finance operations in O N M.
Did the O N M budget go down? Is that something we'll see in that?
You'll see the same explanation for the decrease, correct.
Are we required by law to put that O N M salary in O N M?
Well
Or regulation of
Secretary that Pearl does, is the O N M secretary, so her salary should be
So best practices would dictate that you put it there.
Part of my salary is in O N M because
Part of my responsibilities. Where was the rest of it?
Ed fund, just like the rest of the administrators.
And I guess my question is, is that those kind of splits are fine split required by
Not required, but it's
Best practice.
It's best practice to do, because half my time is spent with operations.
So half your salary comes from there?
But it's kind of harder, harder for us to track from year to year whether our expenses are increasing or not, if we're not consistent, we don't do it the same
We're going to be consistent going forward.
Okay.
Was part of the superintendent's salary in the past part of O N M?
No, it wasn't, and it should have been, and you can even go as far as 10% would be the limit, but 10% of my salary could actually go to transportation too, because I oversee transportation. But that's not required, but that's best practice to do, if I wanted to do it, go that far.
Okay.
The IT salaries increase to 78,000, and that is to, to support a health desk staff person, which I think was discussed at prior meetings. And also Matt left three quarters of the year, so he didn't earn his annual salary. So that portion of the actual is less, which makes that number a little bit more than what you'd be, what you should, should have actually happened.
Is there, again, some way to see that we correspondingly increased purchase services? If, which I presume we did, to deal with Matt leaving?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the increase in purchase services, part of the explanation is net 56 services.
Yeah, okay, and I'm, I'm just kind of interested in consistently tracking whether we are actually going up or going down in, in this case, IT expenses. Whether they're through, you know, through, through direct hire or through purchase services.
Right.
Is, I mean, it's important for some things, but not important to see our, you know, but for us to see our total expenditures for, let's say, IT, we would need to match them both, right?
But, yeah, but again, this is strictly salaries, this is strictly salaried employees, I understand the question. But this, this is just reflecting strictly salaries.
And we couldn't have budgeted for that, right?
No, but there's an actual.
Right.
Of course.
At this point, there's an actual.
Okay.
And then the last one is the substitute salaries, you're gonna see a decrease. And that's due to less subs required for fiscal year fifteen for common core professional development. With the early release, the extra time for professional development. The amount that we had last year will not be the same for this coming year.
Do you know what the relative change was for, from fiscal year thirteen to fourteen with, with substitute salaries?
Substitute salaries, two eighty-seven, this year to fourteen, budget of two fifty-seven.
You're asking for the year prior, the twenty-twelve to twenty-thirteen.
Oh, yeah, I could get that number for that.
I mean, should, would, should we expect that that was a big, big jump?
You know, if, no, if I recall looking at the numbers, I believe it was around two forty, two forty-five was. Even maybe two fifty.
But it was two forty-five to two eighty-seven, it's coming down to two fifty-seven?
Two fifty-seven, right, we know we have a few FMLA staff.
And David too, maybe with the increase in staff, you know, like we've added on.
Yeah, sure.
More positions, so that's gonna require more, I mean, perhaps more subs and people are out more.
I know that we, at one point, said we spent about sixty-three thousand dollars on subs for common core preparation, and so our reduction is only twenty-seven thousand.
I based the amount going forward based on our last, our history of what we're paying for subs. So it may fall less. I thought two fifty-seven was a reasonable, reasonable number.
I had the same question, because my understanding is because we have early release that we would totally eliminate the need to pull the teachers out of the classroom, eliminating that sixty, I think it was sixty-six thousand for some reason is the number that I'm remembering.
Yeah, well, that's, that's kind of part of what prompted my question. Because, you know, two thousand, fiscal year two thousand and thirteen did not have the common core development. And so, and so if it's at two forty-seven, then, you know, then that's, that's without it. So, you know, I'm not sure how all the mon, how all the numbers flush out there, but, you know, so if it's coming back to two fifty-seven, you know. And with the increased number of classes and the increased enrollment, you know, does that make sense? You know, taking whole professional, you know, all that common core professional development out, and just looking at fiscal year two thousand, twenty thirteen at two forty-seven, fiscal year twenty fifteen at two fifty-seven, is that just normal trend?
Well, as I understood is, and maybe I'm oversimplifying it, is that that sixty-eight thousand was entirely spent on all those committees. On the professional development committees, and now that's going to become, should become a non-factor. So that we'd save that amount that we spent this year on that.
And to, into going to what David's saying, in twenty thirteen, let's just say two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was spent on subs. Not all of that was related to absences, there was some related to professional development. It just wasn't done the same way we did it last year, so some people left for workshops, some people did go to conferences, some people were pulled out for teams. They just weren't done in the committee structure that we did last year. I don't know what that total was, I don't have it in front of me, but if we say two hundred thousand was spent on absences and fifty thousand was spent on professional development, it's probably comparable to what we did last year, it's just we did it more consistently.
And as you mentioned, the other moving part is the FMLAs, right?
Yes.
Well, I think, yeah, the sixty-eight thousand was strictly committee work, as I recalled it.
But we didn't send people out, we didn't send people out last year, it was very limited, but the year prior, a lot of people went to conferences, a lot of people went out.
But we don't have any information here on the year prior.
No, but I think it needs to, it sounds like we would like follow-up on that question. Just a breakout of pure sub, substitute meaning sick. Whatever that bucket is.
Personal absences, staff development absences, maybe for the past three years.
Total, and then how does that relate to thirteen, fourteen with the same variables? Because you should be able to see for thirteen, fourteen, an increase in the, you had a nice word for it, I'm not gonna get it as good as you. Like staff development versus personal re, that, you should see that increase. According to you, and then it should be decreasing.
Asterisk the FMLAs, because that's such a, I mean, one person, that, I mean, they're out for six months.
Right.
That skews everything.
Well, we know now, we don't know what's gonna happen during the year either.
Right, sure.
Well, and it could be that, you know, maybe we had a significantly higher number of those in one of these years, so the decrease isn't as much.
And that's why your budget number may be higher, because just for.
Right.
And I, I think we're also trying to learn the extent to which we're hiring subs, when the teachers are in fact there for all these giving tests and all these other things, we're just trying to.
Teachers.
Yeah, understand why we're, what are the reasons for using subs other than illness?
That's, that's a good point, because whenever there's the, the testing, there's often subs involved, right?
That, and again, the committees, I mean, we're not gonna have that again.
The, there's, there's like building leadership committees and then district-wide leadership committees. I, I, or, is all of that.
The district-wide leadership committees aren't during the day, just the curriculum committees were last year.
Okay, but the building leadership committees?
I think some of them were in the morning, some of them were at lunch, some schools did take half-days. But I don't think it was a common practice.
Yeah.
I don't think it was on a regular basis, that's what I guess I should say. But we could divide that out and do absences, professional development, FMLA, and other, and if, whatever other, you know, maybe we can figure that piece out. Whatever other defines, whether that's testing or parent meetings, because sometimes we pull out subs for, excuse me, pull teachers out for IEP meetings and have to have a sub in, so there's a lot of other reasons for those subs.
Required, I mean, they gotta be there.
They're required to have a general education teacher there.
This, this is another subject, maybe another meeting, but I think some of us would be disappointed that if we, if we have the early release that we're, you know, which we are going to have, that, that there continues to be the need for substitutes for other meetings. You know, other district or building meetings. You know, we were hoping that that would all be encompassed within the early release.
And I'm sorry, when I say other meetings, there's IEP meetings that can't be done on a Monday.
I understand.
But you're right, for professional development or building-related school improvement or district improvement, those should not be done during the day.
Okay.
Well, I think it would be, this breakout will give us a good perspective on really how much it costs when people are sick or have FMLA or have to deal with personal issues and, and we need a sub that's different than a learning for learning, I mean.
Yeah, we're just trying to get a handle on why we have subs.
And the types of leave that they're on, because I know that under the CBA, there's at least, what, half a dozen, if not more, types of leave.
Well, I mean, right.
Just to see what, you know, there's not just FMLA.
Okay, so I have that noted.
Moving on to the benefits question, do we pay for contributions on behalf of subs?
What, what contributions?
Pension contributions, excuse me.
If we use parapros as subs, doesn't, aren't we required to make a pension contribution?
Right, but it's the small percentage we're talking about.
Of, is it the type of teacher?
No, it, it, in TRS and THIS, if, even for our certified, even for our teachers, the portion that the, the district pays is a small portion, we're talking about point zero zero eight percent, seventy percent, and point zero zero five eight percent.
Next, what's five eight, is that THIS?
THIS and then TRS.
What's THIS?
That's the health insurance portion.
Oh, okay, and it's point oh eight eight, you said for the.
Point zero zero five eight, I can get the exact, I don't have.
Okay, but so, but for all subs, we do make contributions on behalf or only certain ones?
No, for, for certified subs, well, you have to be certified to be a sub, but yes.
So that's all subs then, really?
Okay, yeah, yeah, right.
Not certified teachers, but they're certified subs.
You have to be cert.
Certified to be a sub.
You get a certificate to be a sub.
Yeah.
Okay, do we know what that number is, how much subs cost us in, in contributions? If it's not, you can get back to me on that, I'm just curious, because I'm trying to figure all that, so parapros in general, do we pay pension contributions on their behalf too?
Yes.
Okay, even the part-time ones, or no?
Are you talking about TRS and THIS?
Just the parapros.
But.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
If they're certified, we have to pay them.
Part-time or full-time, does not matter.
If they're certified, right, we have to pay their.
And I thought one of the questions that we had asked somewhere in this package, we'll see if it's there, was how many of our parapros are certified and how many are not?
I believe they're.
All certified.
They are all certified.
Not certified teachers.
Not certified teachers, but certified parapros.
But they're not certified teachers, some of them are certified teachers, and in the past, prior to this year, they were requ, that was a request to have them be certified teachers so that they could sub.
Anybody who's been there longer term, per se?
As a parapro?
Yeah.
Is a certified teacher.
It's not certified.
Is not, or, is not?
Not a certified teacher or not a certified parapro? Okay.
Yeah.
So if it's a certified teacher, we do make those two contributions?
Yes.
And if they're not, we don't? No, pension.
So certified, certified parapros that are not certified teachers do not require contributions to TRS and this?
They would get the IMRF if they do not.
Oh, okay, so they would, we would make a contribution to IRF, if they're certified teachers and they're working in a paraprofessional role, we have to do a pension contribution, okay.
So, so there are, there are part-timers and we're, they're in IMRF?
Yes, as long as you work over six hundred hours.
A year?
A year, you're eligible for an IMRF.
And if somebody's a part-timer, let's say they're working twenty hours a week, for how many weeks? Is that six hundred hours?
Yes, that's one.
So how many weeks would that be?
Thirty-six, we have thirty-six weeks in a school year.
Well, it would be thirty to get you to that number, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
So thirty-six is more than thirty, so, yeah.
Yeah, so, so what you're saying is then the vast majority of parapros, let's say they're not certified. Let's say they're not, there are contributions to IMRF.
Correct.
And at the moment, the contributions to IMRF are actually, the percentage is higher than TRS.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay, got it. So one way or another, parapros are getting a contribution to something.
Correct.
If they work more than six hundred hours, is that true for certified teachers as well, is that only IMRF?
Is what true for certified teachers?
The, the six hundred hour rule that you cited, is that for IMRF?
TRS.
For TRS.
TRS, it doesn't have to be six hundred hours, it's on, it's credible earnings under TRS if you're certified staff.
One hour.
Okay, all right, sorry, I'm, thank you.
But it's, it's, right now, the district's contribution is minimal.
Minimal because.
Because in theory, the state is supposed to be funding this.
Right, and the employee's contribution is, is higher too.
Is higher, they're funding it and then. Yeah, and the, and the majority is supposed to be funded by the state.
Correct.
Okay, so we need follow-up on percentages to TRS and this?
IMRF, yeah, just curious.
What is our contribution, the district's contribution to IMRF and TRS?
Okay.
For subs.
And what's our chunk of change?
Parapros.
Sorry.
For parapros and for subs, and what, how much is that costing us? Yeah.
Hang on a second. Okay, so district.
We know what the salaries are, but just the pension contribution costs for, and I think do we know for, we'll see.
You want dollars or percentage?
The percentage is the rate in which we pay.
Right.
Like, if they make a hundred dollars today, they make.
Point zero zero eight, we have to pay.
Right, right, but what is, what is the, our contribution breakdown to IMRF, TRS, whatever it may be, for subs? And the breakdown for?
Care professionals.
Thank you.
For subs, it would all be TRS and THIS.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, benefits, TRS and THIS, see, is almost a five percent decrease. Majority of that decreases due to higher paid administrators. Last year. We replaced with, when we started, we came out at a lower salary, which is what TRS is based on, so. We'll see that decrease mainly because of that reason.
Could you, I'm sorry, Zach, could you repeat that?
We had higher salaries at the beginning of the year for our specialized director or one of our principals, our two.
Oh, okay. All right, I get you.
Next line item is the health, dental, life insurance. I'll explain in more detail on the next slide why the increase was sixty-one point three percent. You know, the majority is increasing full-time parapros and increasing the number of certified staff. Unemployment, my budget at twenty thousand, we did pretty well last year fighting unemployment cases. We won a number of them. But I think depending on how we approach hiring parapros from that, if we just do it the full-time, we're gonna have quite a number of them that are not gonna be employed next year that are gonna file for unemployment. Don't know what our outcome's gonna be with them filing for unemployment.
So if they're not recalled, you're suspecting they'll file for unemployment later? Okay, I thought they would have had to do it when they were laid off, no?
We haven't heard anything yet, it takes a while sometimes for us to get that information.
That's, that's assuming that they don't get another job.
That's, we did, but I have to put something in there just in case, you know, we are.
I'm sorry, what was the amount, Zach, that you're estimating?
Twenty thousand.
Okay.
The other item I wanna focus on is the early retirement incentive. For anybody that retired June thirtieth, we make a, for the contract, we make a payment for the retirement in January. And we know of four individuals, and the calculation came out to the district would be paying thirty-five thousand dollars in retirement.
That number, is it easy to predict once you know, is it easy to predict because they have to give a long notice for retirement?
We know that at June thirtieth, we know who was retiring.
Right, so then you put it in.
Due to the calculation, and it's paid out in January, so.
But you really have no vision for the future, because you don't know who's gonna submit their retirement.
I mean, some, some have given notice that they're gonna retire.
So we'll know.
We can go probably four years.
Oh, okay.
Okay, you can see the next one, we're not gonna have that TRS penalty this year, a bit. And then the Cobra Insurance, we're still envision that we are paying, we'll be paying their insurance for fiscal year two thousand and three.
Zach, back to the TRS penalty there for Lamberson, two hundred and five thousand?
Correct.
Is that, okay, and, and there are two components to that?
Yes.
Could you explain the two components?
One of them is the early, retiring early, that component is the, because you retired early, the district has to pay the portion of, for the early retirement, and the second part of that penalty was exceeding the six percent in the last four years, and the district had to pay that portion.
Yeah, and, and what were the two components roughly?
Seventy-seven thousand, I believe, was the penalty for the six percent, and the remainder was the district's share. And the remainder was the district's chair for the early retirement.
So it'd be two hundred and five minus seventy-seven?
Correct.
And that was due to the, what, the...
Retiring early.
Retiring early.
Right.
And that is also estimated for several, the early retirement incentives of thirty-five thousand, is that the same thing?
No, no. The early retirement incentive is part of the teacher's contract. For long-term.
Well, I guess that brings, are there any teachers who are, you know, whose retirement will subject the district to the ERO?
We looked at it and what plays into incurring a cost for that is, is at what age they're going to retire early. The ones that we know that are retiring early before their thirty-five years of service have attained the age of sixty, which will be the eighteen penalty from the district.
Okay, so you're not anticipating?
No.
Okay.
This is number zero, yeah.
All right.
Let's find the benefits. Purchase services, one point, almost one point seven million has been budgeted for specialized tuition improvement board and programs for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. Actual expenses for two thousand and fourteen was two point five million. And in that cost, it would be part of one of the, one of our directors that we had hired this year. Part of, one of their contracts was under purchase services, the other one, the other contract was under salaries. Next line item, we have two hundred and fifty thousand, this is still under purchase services. Two hundred and fifty thousand has been budgeted for board of ed purchase services. Actual expenses for three hundred and thirty-one thousand, the decrease of almost twenty-five percent. I think this cost in there are legal fees.
Can you tell me real quick what else comprises that number? You said legal fees and what else is in there? Is Ramesh's salary in there as well? Not salary, but whatever.
No, Ramesh's salary went into, because it was related to her renovations, it went under capital projects.
Okay.
I can break out the detail for you if you want, I'll look up that account.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, I'm just curious, thanks.
Page next.
Back to that first bullet point there, so we, we increased, is that thirty-three percent, is that right?
Decreased.
Decreased.
Decreased, okay.
And again, part of that decrease is reducing latency services. Our specialized students, off-campus students, turning fifteen, and now our responsibility of RV, pay these salary, our services under there.
So again, there's an increase somewhere else.
Right, if you decrease it, right, there's an, oh, increase somewhere else, right.
And is there somewhere, if I take this number and I look somewhere else, can I s...
Well, if...
I know.
We go further on with the, you'll see where our costs are increasing.
Okay.
And then the next one is two hundred and seventy-two thousand. The remaining six hundred and seventy thousand is related to line fiber, network assessments, Common Core professional development, televising board meetings, mobile device on laptops and desktops, computer technology related services.
Now, what is the Common Core PD, what is that going to be comprised of?
Brian, explain that one?
Sure. Some of the plans for that PD would be to train or teach or direct interactive instruction, which is quite, okay, so everyone's hearing, talking about that. We're looking at, hopefully, we're looking at high school to middle school. We're just starting those talks, though, I don't know when we're going to get that done. And we'd like to eventually have that, strategies to supply.
What's the cost attributed to though?
Yeah.
Trainers.
So bringing outside trainers in?
Yeah, bringing in, bringing in trainers, middle school. And then it's a year-long.
What type of trainers?
And we haven't talked about that, this is all, you know.
Okay.
Brian just had Zach budget for it.
Right.
Nothing has been talked about or planned, so next month we'll...
There's a lot of things that are out there with, like, still out there as far as making, trying to put a proposal forward if we decide to. We would have to firstly identify a pilot group in the districts, right? Right now, as I'm saying, we can give those, we think that would have the highest impact, but we haven't worked on that.
This is focused strictly on the junior high group?
For right now, for right now, well, what it's really focusing on is high-level instructional strategies that will align with our Common Core curriculum, so that, again, there's a lot of existences in our classrooms. So we have, and what I have identified is the DII, as far as the insurance, that is also part of that.
Did we, did we have a, an expenditure in this past school year for that item, Common Core PD?
Yeah.
I mean, that was for training, right?
That was for, yeah, yeah, that was, that was more for training with, you know, with our Common Core lenders. There wasn't, you know, it wasn't, we had a few Common Core PD days, but we didn't have a lot of the time to bring the whole staff together.
So I'm not thinking of the sixty thousand dollars for substitutes, but I mean, you're talking about hiring trainers, right? Is that what that?
These would be trainers, and it would also be, if we were to do this, the training, now, again, there's a lot of this has to be learned to find out, but the training would take place on a Saturday, Saturdays, so we're not pointing to shot clock. But that adds to the expense because we pay the...
So this isn't part of the early release times and all that?
And this is, I just want to stress, this was just something that we're budgeting.
I understand.
We have not even talked about it at all, so...
I think we, you know, we want to get our arms around this though, you know, this has been a big topic of discussion. What is, what kind of investment are we making in Common Core? It's important, so...
Yeah, and if I could just answer real quick that question, it would be part of, the continuing of the PD would be part of the Mondays, but getting the official training takes, there's, I think there's four full-day trainings, so the day would be for Saturdays, but again, it's...
And I'm assuming that that's a budget, that's a holder, and then a program will be presented to us for approval at some point. And this is just basically to plug in the budget to make sure the money is allocated and then... It doesn't mean it has to be spent, it just, it has to be there for this, to build the budget.
And we want to see how...
What's the timetable of that decision-making?
You know, I, I mean, it's...
Is it first half of the year, second half of the year?
It's not, you know, I mean, I'd like to, to have a better idea, you know, by October, by the ed committee meeting. And I think that gives us, you know, enough time to put something together, and then we'll have a better idea what budget for money is.
Right.
To present, and, and yeah, it's, it's not something we're going to go forward with our president, right? It's just...
Right, and so then, if we, at that point, if it's presented and it's decided that that money doesn't need to be spent that way by this board, it's just basically a holder in our budget to ensure that we have the money there.
Well, here's, I guess, my question, is this Common Core for the training for the middle school?
Yes, well, it's instructional strategy training for the middle school that aligns with Common Core.
All right. But we have been providing professional development for middle school teachers for Common Core to date, right? They were all part of what we, what we did last year and what we...
Well, they weren't all part of it.
But I mean, but...
Committees were part of it.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right, so, so this is in addition to, potentially?
Yeah, this is an extension of the curriculum, right, so the curriculum is aligned, great, you know, so LA evaporated it, so now this is instructional practices.
Okay, is there a need for that in K through six? The same type of instructional alignment?
Yes, but I'm hoping that once we do middle school training, we're going to be able to, you know, if, if we do middle school training, we'll be able to then facilitate all that internal.
If it did though, it would go under this same budget.
Okay. I'm trying to understand it.
Yeah, and again, it's, I wish I could tell you more information, but this is just, we're really just...
No, it's, I, I understand, and we, like, I was just mentioning that we have not had a planning meeting for the ed committee yet. The first meeting will be in October.
Right.
So all of that stuff is yet to be, to be understood. I'd just like to know where the thinking is, just to understand, you know.
And we also want to see how our Monday schedule is working. If that's running very well and people are ready to go to the next step and start doing more, well, how do we get more? And maybe that's an option, is to do some more Saturday trainings and what's the next step of Common Core? Okay, let's look at our instructional strategies now that we have our curriculum aligned. So I think it's just a placeholder, like Lisa said, but we haven't talked about it because we haven't started our professional development yet. So we don't know what teachers are going to need until maybe the first quarter.
Yeah, it's, it just seems to me, you know, it's a big number, seems like a big number. And to go back to our schedule, it seems like the ed committee waiting until October for our first meeting with, with all on the plate with Common Core and so forth, in this early release and professional development. Is there some reason that we got out of sequence here this summer?
We're not out of sequence. There was no ed committee sequence for the summer, there never has been. I, I was following the traditional schedule, so I, you know, we can discuss if we think we need another, like a specific ed committee meeting between now and October. But again, we haven't had a chance to discuss it, so, meaning myself and, and Brian.
I would like to have us consider that, just because we have a lot on our plate and it's been some time.
We have a lot on our plate.
Period.
In all aspects, not just education, so that's what we mean, we've had a meeting every other week this summer, every week.
Concerning the education, professional development, Common Core, I mean, that's really what we're here for, you know, we're...
I agree.
We're not here for making policies and restoring buildings and those sorts of things, we're here for...
No, I totally agree with you, so...
We're not here for setting policy?
Huh?
I'd say that's not our, that's not our number one priority.
Let's bring that around to art and see if we can deal with it.
Yeah, no, we will, and I already have some topics from you about, you know, things we should be putting prioritizing, so we can have that. If you have, anybody has any other, you know, ideas, and, and if you have an urgency on those that means that maybe we should discuss them before that, then I'll put them on the list and I'll talk to Mary Rose about dealing with it.
Yeah, maybe we should have two education committee meetings before October.
Well, let's not, let's not make light of it there.
I think we're off track.
I do, let's, right, yeah, thank you.
And anyway, anyway, thanks for putting this on there so we know what's coming.
You know, we got off track due to a hundred and twenty thousand dollar item in budget, so, which we hadn't seen before or discussed before, okay, so, just clear that.
And just to the point, I, I find that this process is, is difficult to get our arms around. Clearly, all these expenses fall in all eight different account or funds, right? We got, you know, time from, you know, salaries for substitutes that are involved in this, we got purchase services, we got, you know, all of that, it's, I don't know, getting that whole big picture is difficult. This is helpful, the information's helpful, but it's still a lot, I'm feeling a lot of cross-referencing going on, and I think that's just a part of the process of understanding it.
Yeah, it is trying to go back and see what, we do look to see what everything ties into. So, anyway, there's a lot there to, to absorb.
All right, supplies, date chunks of supplies, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the eight hundred and twenty-four thousand budgeted for supplies are related to purchase of textbooks and materials that are aligned with Common Core standards. We didn't do too much purchasing of supplies last year related to textbooks. We had the idea that once we had Common Core sta, state standards up and running, that we were going to align all of the materials with, with Common Core and make sure that we're buying the appropriate material.
Do you think we did, the process that we went through saved us money in regards to using current materials and realigning them, which I think is a goal that...
Well, I think so.
I mean, this number probably could have been bigger had we not used that process, is that the opinion of the...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, there's, there's lots of stories, and I know of districts that are a little very, very embarrassed that it's not in the billings, on Common Core land, but sometimes it's because they fall behind and then...
It didn't work.
Otherwise, or otherwise it's because they went full in on a curriculum, bought all pieces of it, and now they're finding out what they need. So yeah, and I'll be honest, that two hundred and fifty thousand is a placeholder as well. I mean, I, you know, where we're like, right now, we just purchased units, you know, we're kind of going, sort of, because we're not purchasing like expensive textbooks, we're just purchasing some of the materials that we need, because we have a lot of stuff.
So which programs are these, I guess is what I'm wondering, what kind of materials are?
They're, they're, let's see, texts are like books, but not, not like, not like basal textbooks. But for example, first grade might, you know, be, have a couple, or maybe they want to buy ten, ten different books for their class, not grade student, but for their class, that are highly aligned to the standards, and they're pieces of literature in the form of texts, so the fiction, nonfiction materials. But what they're doing is purchasing what they need, they're not purchasing a little tighter technology. It's got, you know, three hundred stories to fit into this, thirty, basically. So it really is kind of, is a, is a district that just says, only...
Like, we're not making any big investments in like math textbooks, right? And obviously, science is not necessarily directly, you know, impacted by Common Core, although I suppose there's elements of it that are...
We're using our science and our math materials in our Common Core curriculum.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Right.
And we're using some of those, you know, I mean, we're doing that, but we're really, no, we're not like, we're not purchasing another, like, you know, box program for a whole lot of like this in our Common Core curriculum, we're only versing...
And that's what, and that's what's going into this number?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, the left comp to look at under ed fund is get lot late. And of the seven hundred and eighteen thousand budgeted for this account, six hundred and fifty-five is related to technology equipment. We have sixty-three thousand one hundred is related to specialized band, PE and library, et cetera. When coming up with this, with the amount, we looked at what our option is going to be this year for replacing our fifth grade laptops next year. And we estimated a cost of a hundred and twenty thousand, and this is not deciding on using Apple computers, Apple laptops. Also, we have the wireless network expansion, which was a recommendation from client first and also from Ed fifty-six. So that's twenty-five thousand, and then the remaining five hundred and ten is the replacement of technology equipment, servers, laptops, laptops, routers, switches, classroom technologies and mobile technologies.
I don't see the difference there between the top bullet and the bottom bullet. There, one's capital outlay, six fifty-five for technology, and then the bottom is five hundred and ten for replacement of technology. What's, why are they separate and what's, can you explain?
I'm breaking out the six fifty-five from the last three bullets.
Oh, you're, you're breaking out over the last three bullets, so six fifty-five is broken down, one twenty, twenty-five, five-ten?
Yeah. Hey, I want to, I'm from Operation in the Meantime.
Hey, oh, no, I'm fine, operation and maintenance, fine. Again, you have your salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, capital equipment. Here's the history of the last five years, plus the budget of current year. You can see that it changes that, that much except under purchase services, which will some money. Salaries, maintenance salaries increased 3.65, that's normal raises. Building secretaries, here you'll see the decrease from O and M, from 78,000 to almost 40,000. Again, that was shifting the two secretaries that were in this pile last year into Ed Fund. And here's the explanation of the decrease in secretary salaries.
So, I was just gonna ask, when it comes to overtime for maintenance, do you budget that in?
Yes, I do, yes, I do.
Okay.
Sorry, jumping all the way back, because we moved on from there, but under capital outlay, you know, that 120,000 for the fifth grade laptop, that's been pretty consistent every year for six years, right?
No, last year we spent, the last time we bought the laptops, they were a little over 200,000.
Oh.
So, that means if we spend 120, we're gonna lose our Apple designation.
I don't give a.
One hundred and forty thousand if you want.
What I want to know is, you know, this, maybe six years' worth of around 200,000 spending, I mean, that's, you know, over, you know, a million and a half or something, right? And is that, I'm just posing the question to the board, is that, is that a good spend, what use of the money, you know what I mean? I'm sure I'll get opinions from both sides.
I think for us to hold on to what we're doing now for one year till we figure out what we're doing makes perfect sense, because I, listening at Mr. Trafallos' presentations and, you know, how Apple, I mean, it's good equipment, but it's also very expensive, but I resent that we're handcuffed by Apple on buying parts, and you have to buy it if you're only a certified technician, and you gotta buy Apple parts, I just would like the opportunity to explore other options.
I guess I would say that I think having technology part of the curriculum is important. It doesn't have to be Apple, it just has to be integrated, to me, and how we do that this year.
And if I could, as in the case with, you know, mentioned, with the, the funds are allocated, and what we actually, we will be spending it out in terms of, for instance, a device, that is to be determined, it's a placeholder, because we need to determine, well, what is that device? We want to provide some flexibility, that it could be a $350 device if we stayed at the one-to-one, it could be a $600 or $700 device if we stayed at the one-to-one. But since that's to be determined, we want to make sure that the funds are allocated. Same thing with a lot of the, you know, network upgrades. We have the network assessment kind of completed, and we're going to be sitting down with the consultants later this week, but as we develop a plan of, okay, where do we move forward with our network? We want to look at options, we need to include some costs that, that could be incurred in case, and depending on the options, are we moving equipment off-site, and are we more hosted with a lot of our server infrastructure, or are we, are we purchasing equipment internally? So, again, we want to look at what those options are, to ensure that from a budgetary standpoint, that we have the funds allocated.
So, if I'm looking for a little victory here, or a little column of savings, it sounds like we're going from $200,000 for laptops down to 120, so that, that's.
And I would say devices, because we don't know what that device is.
So that's $80,000.
Could be an iPad, it could be another type of mobile device, but I think what we have to look at is, what are we, what is the goal of having a device? What's the purpose of having, and does that device meet that goal and that purpose? And that's what we're really looking at.
Okay, well, I'm glad you're looking at it, thank you.
Were we able to repurpose any of the old machines from the graduating eighth grade class?
We, well, we are repurposing all of those, we were taking those, and that is what the fifth graders will be using. The repair costs on a fraction of them are high, but, you know, we're, it's still less than replacing, than, than with that same device. But at the same time, what we'll need to do is, we'll need to look at, you know, how can we not only make sure that we have enough to meet every, you know, to put in the hand of every fifth grader, but also, we know that maintenance on those devices could be high, you know, could be high failure rates over the six to eight months that it might take to determine what is our next device.
Just because of their age.
Exactly, because also, at some point, at what point do you invest $500 in, in old versus?
Purchasing new.
Right, right.
So what we're also looking at is, looking at laptops that are currently in the hands, older laptops that are currently in the hands of teaching staff, that are entering their fifth year in service and saying, okay, well, let's perhaps replace those, and now we have some more units to put in the hands of fifth graders, that again, would be cycled out. So we're also, you know, we're really looking at our inventories, but believe me, I do not want to over-invest in a technology that, number one, may be going away, or over-invest in a device that really is on its last eight months of service. So we are, you know, being very cognizant of what those associated costs are. At the same time, I do not want to add devices, just add devices. Adding devices is, is already putting more stress on a network that can't handle it. So I want to make sure that moving forward, we really build that foundation that can support everything that we're laying on top of it. And that is, that's, those are the network upgrades that we're, you know, that we've been having conversations about, those are maybe some of the improvements to the wireless network that need to occur, and that is all what's, what's factored in, but with a question mark as to, well, what exactly is in there?
Okay.
One more question, are we looking at devices that come with curriculum? Because I understand there's a lot of options in which they're packaged together.
We haven't begun looking at, at any devices yet. Right now, we are in, we're in the mode of, we need to get these devices ready for.
No, I understand.
The only thing I will caution about that, those types of devices, is the ones that I have looked at in the past, they're typically proprietary, in that you're locked in, it's not like you can use it with anything else but that curricular delivery.
So flexibility goes away?
Exactly.
We did spend some time, right, as I was looking at, looking at some of those, and
there's new stuff coming out all the time, so, that and I can work very closely, but it's not something that, you know, I will say won't work, but it's something we want to look at.
Great, thank you.
Sure. All right, purchase services, approximately 618,000 of the 55 budgeted for the following. Service and maintenance for the chillers, sewer maintenance, that should be completed every year, it hasn't been done in four years. Parking lot pavement, estimated repairs are 250,000. Roof repair work for Hauser, roof repair work for Blight, building maintenance work district-wide, and the landscape.
Zach, just as a follow-up, I know David had asked the question about the cost of the complete sod, and I know you looked into that.
Yeah, it was decided not to do a complete sod, because we want grass in there that's already well-established, and we have a pretty significant area of grass that's well-established, so they didn't want, they were telling us, don't tear that up, because we're not sure how well the new sod's gonna grow it, and then, I don't know if you're aware, we had an incident, you know, last night, somebody drove their car right over the freshly laid, newly laid sod.
In the rain.
Oh.
So we had them come out today, they laid it out again, did the repair work, rolled it, and then now we have caution tape around there, hopefully.
It'll stop the car?
It'll stop the car, but hopefully someone will be like, okay, they don't want us driving on the ground.
And we have a, we have a, that's a long talk, nevermind, keep going.
It was fixed, and it, I'm sure it wasn't too terribly expensive to fix it.
No, but if, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's unfortunate, it certainly is.
Luckily, they, I mean, they went over it twice. Luckily, they didn't do a complete.
They really wanted to do.
Yeah, I mean, that was upsetting, I found it very upsetting, though, I saw this morning.
Okay. Coach?
Maybe, maybe we're not.
All right, capital outlay for O and M, still trying to work on possibly buying another truck, it would help with transporting things from building to building, and with plowing. Right now, we have one truck that does plowing, and the person who plows parking lot has to get here at 12:00 in order to, 12:00 midnight in order to finish by 6:00 in the morning for schools who still. We may need to consider replacing one of the chair, and to get chairlifts at Hauser. Right now, it meets the state requirement of 300 pounds. Our other chairlifts are 500 pounds, and the 300, the one we have is very slow. We consider a new one that handles 500 pounds, it'll be a little quicker and safer. That service, we're all aware of the things we have to make for them next, well, until 2021, we continue to see that year after year. Transportation, we're budgeting 758,000. You can see we went down a little last year, of course, even though we're losing some students. Next year, you never know how many new students will be transferred next year to special ed.
So, Zach, we had a little discussion today about transportation, and it sounds like you've, you've made some good progress in this past year.
Our specialized department, our, yeah, they are.
Could you share with the group what that was? You talked to me how we kept rid of that one all right, and.
Yeah, Always Transportation, we had a problem with them, and we decided to go with another, another transportation company, which came in cheaper and better service, better service, and then Always provided. Also, what Peggy and Pat were able to do in regards to who really requires transportation under Special Ed, apparently, we were transporting students that did not qualify for transportation under guidelines in Special Ed. So that, and then also, we may consider going out to bid for transportation, Special Ed transportation, whatever, to reduce costs, even more. The remaining transportation, it's not only Special Ed, we have homeless transportation, gifted transportation, sports, and some other field trips, not all field trips, with just few field trips that go under transportation.
What's, I, I understand sports, homeless, field trips, what's gifted transportation? What's that?
Gifted is our, gifted students that go to competitions, and the transportation costs.
Okay, so these are out-of-district competitions?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have a sense of what that is? I guess the whole budget's 58,000, right? So it can't be much?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I M R F, calculations based on the percentage of our Social Security, 722, 839 budgeted. We came pretty close to what we budgeted last year, I'm confident it would be about 720, just to be 15. Here's the breakout of budgeted numbers, I M R F, 350,000, Social Security, 91,000, United Care, 118,000. Tour, band itself, casualty casualty premiums, workers compensation premiums, and certainly those. Capital projects, I budgeted 175, and some of that is the new nurse's office renovation, teachers' lounge, policy room there. We're also looking at, on the third floor at Central, we're making offices for Special Ed and transport, and for technology, so we'll have to do some construction up in those rooms. And then the last part, financial ratios, fund balance to revenue ratio, expenditure to revenue ratio, base cash on hand, percentage of long-term debt margin. Our score for fund balance to revenue is 110%, that's, that's a high percentage, and above score of four, which is the best, so we can get expenditure to revenue ratio. The district is spending a dollar and three cents for every dollar received, under a dollar would give us a four, we're a little over, gives us a score of a three. Base cash on hand, we have 383 days of cash on hand, again, that's the lowest risk, a score of four. And then the percentage of long-term debt margin remaining, less than 75% to greater than 50% remaining, that score will actually improve the more we pay down our debt, right now, it's a score of three, still low. Gives us an overall score of 3.6 out of four, which is, gives us a rating of recognition, which is a high rate.
Just a question on the ratios, again, I like to see the, kind of the trend. The one that I'm, the expenditures, we're spending $1.03 for every dollar received, what was it projected, what did it come in at, do we know, for 23, for the year just ended?
I can have that calculated, I can, maybe I'll do the last five years.
I mean, we have it, I mean, we've already looked at it together on some exhibit somewhere.
I know our projected, we're projected to be less based on budgeted numbers, less than a dollar, but I'll.
And then what it also, what it, what it was budgeted, what it came in at?
Okay.
And then, kind of an answer to Rachel's question, I remember last year, I put together an exhibit for myself of what our payroll costs were by category of employee, certified staff, excluding administrators, certified administrators, you know, which included Social Security, other retirement fund, Medicare, this, and then the contribution for the district. Anyway, you're gonna update the THIS and the TRS contributions for Rachel, right? That was one of the things. I would just recommend you fill in the whole chart, because there's also Social Security costs versus, you know, in other words, the whole payroll cost, I think, is what we're interested in for, for the subs. Okay. Not, you know, and I think if we're only looking at one component of it, we can't really compare it. And then I just have a question on the exhibits, again, for those of us who are across, you know, moving around from one exhibit to the other, I saw the building secretaries where we're, where our change is, 38,000 less, I guess that's in.
Should've been 40,000.
Well, 38,000 on salaries and benefits here, and I believe that is in the operation and maintenance fund, so it went down in one, increased in the other. So it went down in one, increased in the other. But what I just noticed by doing the comparison was, no, I'm just, I'm just looking at the corresponding offset, was that it was just benefit. So this was salaries and benefits and the other was benefits, if I can find the right sheet. I just wondered, is it a labeling issue or is it?
I'm not sure which, which was correct.
Find it. What were they in the education fund before?
You have salaries going up. And you have benefits going up, it's just that it's health, dental, life and what, I mean, they're gonna show up in the salaries and the health, dental, life and insurance of education and over here, it's all in one, right?
Right, right.
But again, if I, you, you, they're buried in the, they're ba, it's, it's in here. It's in this big health, dental, life insurance, which is more than just the secretaries, it's all the new employees as well.
Right.
I, I guess, uh, you know what, I'll talk to you later.
Okay.
No, all, all we're look, all, I think, all that's being requested is that if you're gonna show an exhibit that says salary and benefits were one, then you should show salary and benefits in the other.
Yeah, it's just consistency, it's, it's just a consistency issue, um, and, and I just wanna, you know, here, here are salaries, district secretary is going up.
Broken out what individually this is.
No, I, I understand, I just think that the, the education fund is more comprehensive, so that's why the breakout is that way. But I understand the consistency as well.
I understand both of them, right. Okay. But it, I mean, it is in fact just salaries and the other one is salaries and benefits, it's not a labeling issue. Okay.
And Zach, just for clarification, uh, so for capital, for capital projects budget, we, we talked about, there's money in two different funds in the capital and then there's some, there's 50,000 in the education, 1.4 total. You know, we talked about the windows, supply, windows would be a part of that. With that, and that could be up to a million dollars, right? What are the other types of remaining projects in there? I mean, is like the, I know we're, there's still discussions about the cubbies at Ames, is that a part of that?
That's part of it.
Okay.
There's also additional candidates that you are, uh, a couple buildings behind.
That would fall within that?
That would fall within there.
1.4.
Yeah, and, um, there could be other things that come up.
Yeah, so it sounds like, I mean, we could be pushing that 1.4 pretty hard.
We could be pushing that, where the board would have to make a decision going forward if they would want, uh, attention or whatnot as well. Yeah, and what you've already approved, uh, from education.
And right now, we've approved, we're going to move forward with the windows, it's in some manner, right?
Well.
Or no?
No, there, there still has to be discussion with the.
We need to hire an architect.
Right.
Well, I, I, I mean, you know, I differentiate between, the windows have, that's, the windows have to be addressed at some point, right? You know, whether as you do aluminum or do steel or do, you know.
Eventually, yeah, I mean, it's not imminent.
Polka dot windows, whatever, that you gotta, we're gonna be addressing these windows in, in some, in some manner.
You need a, a minimum of, of nine months, uh, in order for, for, if you're gonna go with the same material, uh, to even have that.
Are we talking both?
Yes.
Yes.
Isn't that all about the, our, the.
Yes.
Preservation commission and.
And ordering ahead of time too.
Having an architect.
If we didn't wanna fight that battle and we said we wanted to do the same material, I mean, there's no, we can, we can make that decision, but we, you'd actually have to make that decision now.
For next summer.
I think we ought to pursue, pursue that without submitting, you know.
I guess, you know, not for.
I think we fight the battle.
Not necessarily for discussion right now, but it seems like something that we need to, as a board, needs to give our administration direction on, okay, here's the three, the five things, what do we want them to pursue? We have a 1.4 million dollar budget out there amount, how do we want to, you know, start utilizing that money? What's the, what's the first priority, second priority, third priority?
Well, what's the forum for discussing, uh, would that be in the finance committee?
I'm hoping that, you know, at the next meeting, we talked about at the August 19th meeting, finalizing an architect. Once we have an architect, then we sit down and do a complete facilities review, um, life safety as well as improvements in projects. And then from there, I think, you know, have them laid out, here's what we could do in year one, year two, year three, but here's what we have to do, here's what we, is a wish list. Have to, having to do a meeting, life safety, and then a wish list, and then we should prioritize and say, okay, if this year we have 1.4, what on our have to do should we get done? And what on our want to do should we get done?
Right, 'cause I don't see the windows or the cubbies as life safety.
No.
This is, so it's different.
And I see.
But actually, the windows are not in the budget, they're in the, the reserves are in the fund.
Right.
So, I mean, in your budget that you presented, that wasn't a spending item for this year, but the money is sitting in, in the fund to be spent at the appropriate time.
And I see your plan is to levy in, in life safety.
Yes.
And to be able to do that, we have to have the life safety plan come, uh, finished by basically March or April, something like that?
Yes.
There's real timing involved there, right?
So, Zach, uh, we, we discussed the substitute issue quite a bit here tonight. Looking at it from another, may, we looked at it from the top down, from the bottom up. What, what do we pay our, our substitutes per day? Is it a flat fee?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. And, uh, what is it?
A hundred and, hundred to 105 a day.
Hundred to 105. I guess I, I question that, uh, is that enough? Does that?
That's, that's pretty much the norm amongst school districts.
Yeah, in our area.
Uh, even way up north.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, if we're, uh, if we're getting the best substitute teachers? And, uh, I know there were times that we had a hard time getting substitutes this past year, enough to fill the positions and, um, I, I don't think that's, that's a, a place to save money, we, you know, this is, we're investing in the students. So, I don't know, I just posed it as a question, something to think about. And maybe that's more for education committee about how much we, a hundred dollars a day for a substitute teacher is, is not much.
Oh, that, man, he brings up a good point and, and talking about the, uh, the SAMA budget for substitutes. If a substitute is a long-term substitute, since for some of the SAMA, it goes beyond 100, 120 days, we actually have to pay them at a salary of a first-year teacher.
Dictated by the CBA.
That's a long-term sub.
That was dictated by the state.
That's, yeah.
The state. Yeah, so it's dictated by something else.
One hundred dollars a day to, um.
All right, well, that, that, I guess I ask the question again, would that salary be reflected in the substitute line that you?
No, because sometimes we don't know that the, the person's gonna be working more than 120 days. So if somebody goes on SAMA, says, oh, I'm gonna come back three months, and then after three months decides, well, you know what, I'm not gonna come back this year, I'll go back next year. That's a decision that was made during the year.
Right, but I'm not talking about budgeted, but now I'm talking about actual. Well, let me, let me ask it, let me ask it a different way. If you hire somebody to be a long-term sub, where you have to pay them at the first-year salary rate, okay? So at some point, that happens, where is that salary?
Under substitute salaries.
Okay, so that would still be under substitute, okay.
And I would, I would support paying the long-term sub at that higher rate. Because, uh, a hundred dollars a day for a substitute is barely getting by, right?
Well, that's not a choice for us.
You have, it's not a choice, you have to if it's over 120 days, correct?
No, I'm not talking about, I'm, I'm talking about the hu, the, uh, the whole issue of substitutes.
Kind of like increasing their daily rate.
Right.
I think that, if that's a forward discussion, if that's something that we wanna put on an agenda to increase.
Well, I would, I would drive that, that discussion, not based upon the dollar amount, but the standard that we have, the expectations that we have for these substitute teachers. That they're not supposed to be coming in here, throwing a, a DVD into, into the DVD player and then walking out the room. That's not substitute teaching. So, raise the standard, make the standard, and then if that standard requires a higher, you know, value, then, then do so. Then we can, then we can have that discussion.
Yeah, and I, again, I think we're still trying to get our arms around what substitute, what are the reasons we have them in the first place, whether they're, um.
Right, which is the first follow-up step and then it will lead to a discussion of.
And, and potentially. And what I'm, and what I'm hoping is there might be some way we can actually reduce the number of subs, maybe, 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 maybe not, you know.
I'd say reduce the number and increase the quality, I think that we, we would wanna do both.
I mean, it's my understanding, you have substitutes that, that do, that just monitor detentions, is that correct? In school detentions or is that?
That's not aware of.
Okay.
So it is, we'll do some follow-up on the substitute and then we can have a, a plan for a discussion, a, a different discussion once we have those, that foundation of knowledge about how it currently breaks out.
It was a big issue this last year with, with the number of subs and parents talking about the number and quality of the subs. I mean, it's something that we, we can't just, uh, push aside.
But the, but the 100, 100 to 105, that's not in the CBA? I'm surprised that's not in the, that's not dictated by the agreement. It's not?
No, 'cause they're not part of that. Yeah, they're not.
They're not a part of the union.
It's usually a regionally competitive amount, you know, so we'll.
The prevailing wage, kinda thing?
Well, we can, I mean, you know, that could be, what are people paying to, you know, down by the superintendents for Westport?
I would think the union would have a.
I would like to know more details about what the market range is and whether or not we think it'll have an impact on the quality of people we get. I, I get that if you offer more, you're gonna attract.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you offer 125 dollars a day, you're gonna get more request fees, a substitute in our district. And likewise, you, you could be more selective and.
Fair enough, do we have a process to, to review and, um, rate subs and do we have any way to, you know, pick the ones we like better? How does that, I don't know.
We have a system, uh, we have a system that's called ASOP and subs sign up for jobs. We've had, uh, some inconsistencies with the use of the system, meaning that some subs were just, you know, called, had favorites on their call. That, that skews some of the data that we're allowed to pull from the system, so we're, we're trying to get very consistent with that. The, um, but another new issue, I don't know all the details exactly, depending on the amount of hours, time subs work for, now, that could lead to additional costs.
I don't follow.
So if self-work a certain amount of hours or days during the school year, that could add on to, am I right, Zach?
Yes.
Then that add to like, uh, benefit costs that we then hold the substitute. So, it's one of these things that I think is worthy of a good discussion because there's.
As long as you're not trying to keep the days down of the good subs to save money.
Right.
But that's what happens.
That's what you do.
Yes.
So could I propose?
So that's counterproductive, right?
Could be, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I propose that we have a discussion about subs and it either goes on education or finance at a later date? We do kind of a discussion about subs, including the follow-up, the costs and your input. I mean, I think we could come together with a, learning about subs with some good data.
I think it's, I think it's a very important topic.
So, let's proceed with that and we'll figure out where it needs to go. Okay.
And in the meantime, we'll get all the follow-up questions answered and then find out maybe what a regionally competitive costs are.
So, we, any other questions? The budget, just, we're good to move on with that, everyone in their packet had the ISBE, um, format of the budget. That's the piece that's gonna go online, so that's what, um, when we take action at the special meeting, it's the ISBE budget form that will be placed online for 30 days. And it can be changed, it just has to be out there.
We'll also have a paper copy in our office.
Correct. Okay. Really, time is not working out great. Onto item D, new topics, um, Mr. Tofano will walk us through the internet and WAN, sorry, I'm not doing that right. WAN connectivity options review, it should've been in your packet as well.
Wait, who says WAN?
I'm, I think I.
I say WAN.
I don't know, I don't.
You say vanilla, I say chocolate.
Except unless it's OB, unless it's preceded by OB, then in that case, it's WAN.
So, Don.
Okay, thank you, and good evening. Uh, yeah, I was gonna talk a little bit about the.
Do you have the microphone?
Oh, sorry, I still don't remember that.
Talk a little bit about our internet WAN connectivity options. We have been, uh, over the past month and a half or so, working with Comcast and AT&amp;T. Those are really the two providers, the two providers that provided us, uh, options on fiber connectivity between our schools and out to the internet. So that's what we've been evaluating. The question did come up is, well, what other technologies are out there and, and have we considered them, are we considering them? So this is just an informational presentation to show you, uh, what, what, what our options truly are and why we're looking at, at fiber. Okay, first off, why do we need to upgrade these, this existing infrastructure and increase the capacity of our existing WAN and wide-area network connections? It is really to support the, our strategic plan and guiding principles in that, uh, we need to build an infrastructure that supports 21st century learning. And in order to develop district-wide instructional technology guidelines that optimize rigorous and relevant learning experiences. And, and then also the delivery of the park assessment, which is gonna be in the, in the spring. That, the infrastructure, in order to truly have a 21st century learning environment, we need to open things up a bit. We need to make sure that we have access to those resources. Many of the curricular resources that are now, uh, allow, that are out, that are out there are online. They allow you also the option down the road to move maybe from a, a textbook environment to a digital curriculum. Uh, and, and I believe that that's where, uh, you know, curriculum is going and because of the dynamic nature of it and, uh, the ability to, to serve the masses. And then also for the, the park assessment, which does have requirements for, uh, schools connectivity-wise to be able to deliver it successfully.
Are we, are we well below that requirement?
We are, my estimation is that we, we are below it, well below it, likely, and I think the network assessment is, is going to provide that, the information from that. Uh, which, with that, we'll present at a future date, so we can look at, hey, this is where we're at, and these are the requirements we're gonna need for parks.
Right, so, so you've, have people looking at it now that come back and say, you know, we're, you know, right at park assessment, we're fine, or in your belief, we'll be below it?
Exactly.
Okay.
And the thing you have to remember about park, the, um, the associated requirements are changing as well. In that there's a year-one requirement, but then the requirements are increasing over the next few years because the test is going to be incorporating more multimedia into the online delivery, which uses up bandwidth. So, so what are our options in terms of connectivity technologies that we can realistically consider? Well, our existing service, and these are really the options that are really available to us, our existing service, which is coaxial cable modem, uh, service. And then we have fiber, which is really the one we're, we're, we're looking at most right now. But one, and I don't know if it had been discussed in the past, but there's also, you can do a level of wireless or microwave technologies between locations. And we're gonna talk a little bit about what that impact has and kinda pros and cons to the solutions. So if we evaluate each of the solutions and looking at coaxial and what we have right now. So if we evaluate each of the solutions, and looking at coaxial and what we have right now, what are the pros of it? Well, it's inexpensive, and the, the service delivery timeline is, is pretty quick. It's really just like ordering cable service, in that they're, they're delivering Internet to, to the site very similar, the same way Comcast is delivering Internet and cable connectivity to the households. It's just the, the amount of bandwidth, and coaxial does have its limitations. What are the cons? The service level agreement. Service level agreement basically saying, well, what happens if, if we lose a service? What's the turnaround time? How soon is it guaranteed to be back up and running? And with coaxial business class cable, it's, it's best effort, which means we'll, we'll fix it as soon as we can. There, there is no service level agreement that, that, that states that. Now, obviously, if you run over, if you have outages, you can then, you know, look at deducting from, from billing and so forth. But best effort is their, their service level. The cons are reliability. It is, you know, when you have a storm, you have, I'm sure you've all experienced, if you've got Comcast cable or whatever your Internet service provider is, you do have, it has a greater impact when there is storm damage and so forth. Scalability, you are capped out at, at what your maximums can be in terms of bandwidth and throughput.
And where are we now, right now?
I believe we are, we are maxed out at that, that 100, that 100 meg, and that's, and that's up. And it's, that's 20, 20 meg down, which isn't a whole lot. And that download, that's really the big one. That's, that's getting that information back to the users here. It's intended for a small business, small businesses that have, Comcast generally says about 50 users. Well, we have hundreds of users on our sites, at our sites now, that, that have computers that are up and running, and the resources they would access, I would think would predominantly be online resources, or at least that's the direction it will be going. Again, that, that, my calculations, it's not meeting the PARK requirements. It won't meet the PARK requirements in, in the future, this coming spring. But again, what I want to do is, based on the network assessment, come back with that, that information. And then also, you know, I think with, with a lot of these, in order to get a, a fairly good deal, you're going to need to enter into a multi-year agreement, which we are in the middle of right now. We're about towards the end of year one of a three-year agreement on that coaxial cable service.
So if we have to get out of it, do we face fees and penalties for getting out of that?
Depending on, I mean, we are, we are committed to that term with, if we don't go with Comcast, we still have to pay that money, okay? If we go with Comcast, they absorb, they absorb that into the new contract, they kind of roll it in.
So we're in year one of a three-year agreement for coaxial?
Correct.
Okay.
Some risks, again, the PARK readiness. And again, that's supporting the district's guiding principles in that if we're, if we want to move the district forward with offering 21st century curriculum and resources to students, that, that level of service really doesn't match what the goal is. If we look at fiber, low latency, which means speed-wise, you're looking at quick delivery from, on requests and throughput, reliable, scalable, scalable 10 times that of what coaxial is. So it gives us some flexibility if, if we needed to grow. You do have a service level agreement in, in terms of, you know, response time. If you have an outage, we'll be out within X amount of hours, guaranteed, and service will be restored within X amount of, of time.
But you pay, your cost is relative to that, in, in one respect, to that service level?
Exactly, exactly.
You want response within one hour, then you're going to pay a lot more.
Right, their, their service level agreements are fairly standard. I know it can be, it can be, there is some level of negotiation within the service levels, and that usually is more about clarifying the service level agreement or trying to get more information out of them as to what is and isn't included within the service level. There, with, with the fiber connectivity, there is a possible cost avoidance opportunity with AT&amp;T because we currently have, our phone service is using AT&amp;T lines. We use AT&amp;T T1 lines for our calls between schools. And then we have our PRIs, our phone lines, are also through AT&amp;T. Moving to an AT&amp;T solution, what we could look at is moving off of those lines and actually using an AT&amp;T-provided fiber backbone to deliver that level of service. AT&amp;T will only guarantee that service over their lines for that, over, over that connectivity. But it is something that, it will also be part of the equation as we look into a holistic solution and what the impact is. Service delivery timeline is that it's known, you know, 60 to 90 days from the time we actually make the commitment to have that service installed and up and running. As far as cons, you know, associated costs, it is a more expensive technology. And again, you have that multi-year agreement. You are tied to that multi-year agreement. In the instance of our, this type of fiber connection, because it does require some building out on the service provider standpoint, Comcast, either Comcast or AT&amp;T will be incurring construction costs in order to build out the fiber to get to where, where their fiber exists currently. In order to really make it, you know, in order to make it beneficial from a cost standpoint, the, the three-year contract is really what we'd be looking at with, with any solution that we went with. They, they won't do a one-year, or one-year would just cost so much because you're going to be incurring construction costs as well. One technology, and I'm not sure if it's been talked about in the past, is a wireless or licensed microwave solution, and that would really only be for between locations, not up to the Internet. Some positives to a wireless solution is that it is something that you own, and there, there can be versus, versus fiber or other, other solutions. You can see over time a return on that investment where the total cost of ownership is less. You have low latency, it is reliable. You can do relatively quick installation of the actual hardware in terms of installing an antenna and so forth on a pole, and I'll get to that a little bit later. And the scalability, it's, it's also very scalable technology. Total cost of ownership, and we'd really have to evaluate that if it was a solution that we wanted to be thinking of long-term. In, in my prior district, we did opt for that technology, but we weighed it against costs. It's not an E-ratable technology, per se. So you have to weigh, you know, what your discount is versus what the actual cost to implement. We were at, we were at about a 78% E-rate discount, we're only 40 here. So again, you really, you'd have to look, we'd have to really see what those costs are in order to, to consider it an option. The, the largest con is going to be, it involves installing communications towers. And in, in nice residential areas, as opposed to, you know, in more industrial areas, you know, putting up large poles that have communication, communications equipment on it, it can be difficult to get that passed through local municipalities. I mean, so any tower that we had to put up, we have three municipalities that we'd have to work with. We'd have to work with, obviously, Riverside, North Riverside, and Brookfield in order to, to have that happen. And it would, and until such time, we couldn't have the technology installed.
Well, to finish my question.
So, so from an aesthetic standpoint, the, the installation of the towers is really, would the, would the community oppose having these large communications towers put up by their schools? Another con is that because of that, the service delivery timeline really becomes an unknown because you could be tied up for a long period of time trying to get those, the permits and the approval for those towers installed. There is then a capital equipment purchase and replacement cycle. These, this equipment generally lasts around eight to 10 years. You'd also need to contract a third-party service provider for, for that maintenance on those, those, that equipment and those towers. Because if, if the, in the event that there is some type of an outage, you know, it could be a 100-foot tower, and that's not, that's not something that the district would really support, having an individual up on, on those towers. There are service providers that, that do that, probably the same service provider that's involved in the actual installation of the, the equipment. And again, that risks, delivery timeline relative to the PARK assessment, that's unknown. And we will be up against, I mean, we're, we're up against a clock right now with delivery of that, that PARK assessment. That's it in a nutshell.
All right, I guess, I guess what, the total cost of ownership of the, so, microwave technology, would that be offset by the third-party maintenance agreements and the capital equipment purchases? Or how does that...
You know, the, the total cost of ownership, I put that on, it's, it is a, it is a potential pro. And, and again, until you really start looking at what your actual costs are, and that involves getting, you know, surveys done, identifying the type of equipment that you want to put in, and then also, again, establishing what that service, that would be a truly negotiated service level agreement with a third-party provider, and that would impact costs.
So it's potentially, it is, but you have to look at the whole, which takes time.
Exactly. And, and I would say if, if it was something that we wanted to pursue as a district, I would put that into, that's more of a multi-year investigation of the technology. So if we were to enter into a three-year agreement on, on fiber connectivity, at the same time, over that, the term of that agreement, be looking at, well, what are our options once we get to the end of that three-year term?
Okay, and the other thing you mentioned about this is that it would be, just be between buildings. It wouldn't get us to the Internet? Explain that to me, I don't understand.
Correct, because that's what you're really establishing there, is a, a private wireless pipe between locations, just a point-to-point. And, and it really would be a matter of then, to my knowledge, there's not an Internet service provider that will provide you that same level of wireless connectivity, point-to-point, for, for bandwidth. That would be the fiber, a fiber connection out, out to the Internet.
Right, so just saying that to make microwave work, you still have to have fiber?
You still have to have, the Internet connectivity, that would likely be fiber.
Okay. Of these three, which one would you think is the best?
Well, I think we have to look at what our situation is. Fiber right now, it really, it meets what our needs are at this moment in time. I can guarantee that, I mean, the, the licensed wireless would be more affordable over time. We'd really need to do a great level of investigation of that.
Aren't we handcuffed by being in a three-year agreement with Comcast? Or surprise, Comcast supplies fiber, and they roll that agreement into that, and thus would negate the, our weight of being locked in a contract for three years?
Well, I think we need to really look at what the total costs of the proposals are and where AT&amp;T is coming in. The last review of the proposals, it had it, you know, when you factor in E-rate, when you factor in E-rate, AT&amp;T did come in less than, than Comcast. When you factor in, when you factor in E-rate, it was almost a walk to get the AT&amp;T service and still pay for the Comcast service, as it was to go just with the, the Comcast service.
But if we go fiber, if we just decided today to go fiber, aren't we, don't we still have to pay that contract to Comcast for two more years?
Correct, but we still get the service.
So we could have the backup of our additional bandwidth.
So you still have the, you'll be paying for that, but you'll have a level of service then, with that. The, the other thing that we have to weigh into it is, is this, the, the possible cost avoidance, if we move our existing phone lines over to AT&amp;T, our, our overall phone bills may go down. And so the total cost for our telecommunications, for phones, Internet, and connectivity between the schools...
Goes down because we went with AT&amp;T.
Comcast, well, AT&amp;T will not put their service over someone else's lines. So they will put it over their fiber.
Will Comcast do fiber? Does Comcast do fiber?
Yeah, we have been looking at Comcast fiber and AT&amp;T fiber.
All right, so I mean, assume that fiber costs a little bit more, and would it be in Comcast's best interest to let us go to fiber and let us out of that contract?
They would if we went with them.
Them.
Right.
Okay.
And we bundled in the telephone?
Yeah, does Comcast...
No, because then AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T will, AT&amp;T will not put their service over Comcast.
Can we look at getting Comcast phone service and getting rid of AT&amp;T phone service?
We'd have to look at what our, our AT&amp;T contracts are.
Yeah, because then we get penalized on that.
But either way, I mean, why can't it all be on the table?
Yeah, I agree.
My question.
Question, when the subject of fiber has come up before, people talked about the project would involve laying a line from the railroad station to here. Is that kind of what we're talking about?
Well, I think depending on how long it goes, the cost of building it out was more expensive a number of years ago than it is now. The, the amount of fiber that's out there is greater. And so the distance from here to wherever their, their fiber connectivity is, is closer. And then also, there probably have been some conduits that have been established over time that they're now able to connect more easily to. So their construction costs have, have also probably gone down, or because it is more competitive, they're absorbing some of those costs as well.
Okay, but it's still sort of the same idea, we just might not have to go all the way to the railroad station because other things have been installed over time throughout the village.
Exactly, exactly. Either that it's now closer, or there's more conduits to get you there more easily.
Whatever the case, that capital cost is built into the contract, right? I mean, we don't get charged separately for that.
Correct, correct, yeah, that is correct.
Okay.
When do you want a decision? When would you like an answer?
Well, this is more information so that as we, as we start looking at, at, at fiber, that we know we are just really considering fiber at this point.
Are we two years out, or...
Oh, no, we're, we're, we're a month or, a month or so away.
Well, I think we need, I'd like to see proposals. I mean, fiber, like you say, there's multiple providers, so I don't feel like I can make a decision or anything like that until we actually see some numbers specifically.
No, and that's why we're not asking for it. It has been, it was a discussion at the Technology Steering Committee, and we have been looking at that, and we reviewed a couple of proposals. We had questions for each of the providers. AT&amp;T has gotten us back, gotten back to us on those questions. Comcast has not yet. And my, my goal is that at the, the next Technology Steering Committee, we'll have information, we'll have responses from both providers. We'll also know what, what we, what is on the table in terms of options, in terms of, of services, given existing, you know, telecom contracts. And then also, at the same time, that the network, the results of the network assessment to kind of show where we're at and where we need to be in order to be park ready.
I would suspect that AT&amp;T or Comcast are coming as the most cost-effective. I'd just be shocked if some third-party...
And no one has. We have not, we have not had any other proposals. And we really are limited in terms of who are, who are providers. It is essentially AT&amp;T and Comcast.
So that goes back to Art's point that whatever, you know, costs, so I'd like to, you know, I know AT&amp;T, they won't do it on, they won't let anyone else on, on their lines or what have you. But I think the alternative, what we're looking at is, what can AT&amp;T provide us? You know, if we go, you know, they keep the phones and we give them the, the fiber, and how much that would be, and then now we got to break the contract with Comcast, so how much additional is that going to be, where that costs, that overall cost is? And then with Comcast, what if we went with fiber with them, can we get out of that contract and then gave them the phone business too? I, I think those are the only options that we're kind of looking at.
But it's all fiber.
Right, I think we should.
The WAN is out.
Yeah.
I think a microwave is not going to get us Internet access, which, it's an interesting idea, but it seems like it had too many negatives.
Don't you have better security, in terms of data security? I thought that, I thought that was one reason why some areas went with the microwave technology.
You know, you have on either end of the, you know, on either end of your connections, you do have, you know, security. You're setting up these, you know, whether it's a virtual network, or, you know, a network that is going over, you know, wireless point-to-point, it is, there probably would be a greater level of security with, with a licensed microwave technology than the over fiber. But it's, you know, again, you have security appliances on either side.
Wouldn't fi, I can't see your pros and cons too well, but wouldn't the fiber be more reliable than either the other two? I mean, once, once it's in the ground and it's servicing us?
Well, it's still subject to, you know, to, you know, when there's a storm, heavy rain, I mean, it's, it's still subject to, to that type of outage. It's less, it's less frequent, but it is still subject to it. With the, with the wireless microwave technology, the thing you have to worry about are high winds. You have to worry about snowfall, if there's heavy snowfall, those types, those types of things.
We have a lot of that here.
Last one.
But, I mean, surprise, I mean, I know, again, in my, my prior district, the towers were guaranteed for winds up to about 100 miles an hour. So, and that's, that's like an F1 tornado type winds.
So, which, it sounds like what we're saying, for time alone, fiber looks like our best option, and that over time, if some of these other cons can be addressed, you might be able to go with a one and get saved.
We could start, we could start looking at it. I think the thing that, I mean, you're going to have your upfront costs, and that's the one thing, is that your short-term costs on wireless is going to be greater. And again, looking at, well, how much construction is needed, how much, what needs to be done in order to get us there, and the service agreement, and E-rate. So it's, it's, I'm, it's something that we, you know, just in doing due diligence, should just, you know, perhaps look into, and know that, you know, is it an option three years down the road?
Or, yeah, it's an option, but it's not going to help us in the next year or two.
Correct.
So the follow-up is to actually get some proposals for fiber from AT&amp;T and Comcast, and then come back to the board when?
Correct. Well, the next steps would be meet with Technology Steering, to go over the responses, and really go over the responses from AT&amp;T and AT&amp;T and Comcast, because there were specific questions that were asked of them.
Right.
And then come to consensus on what, what option we want, we'd want to make a recommendation to the board.
And we expect that to be in August, September? I mean, I'm just trying to gauge timeline, because I think it's a meeting.
I'm hoping that within the next, within the next three to four weeks, to have that Technology Steering Committee, based on when, when people can meet, and then at the next available opportunity, to have a recommendation.
Like you said, you're still waiting on Comcast to respond to your questions, right?
Correct.
They'll give you a nice six to eight-week window when they're going to answer?
Yeah, I'm, now at least having heard back from AT&amp;T, I will put some pressure on them, that we're at the point where we need to make a, make a decision.
When is the network assessment going to be completed?
It's, the assessment has been completed, and I'm meeting with them this Friday, just to talk about what, what some of the outcomes were from the assessment.
Okay, so there, will there be a written report issued?
Most definitely. And again, I would like them to not only present for Technology Steering, but even if need be, even present to the board, and I know that they have done that in the past.
Okay.
Okay?
What did you say where the E-rate return was better with fiber or wireless? I didn't catch what you said regarding that.
Well, with, with fiber, we know we're going to get our E-rate discount on that. Maybe not for this year, but in the future, in future years.
Okay.
The, with wireless technology, because we, if we own the equipment, then it's not eligible.
Okay.
There's another, one other asterisk on this, is that E-rate rules are changing, and that will also have an impact on what our phone service and internet service, but fiber, fiber is a technology that will be, continue to be covered under E-rate. But we will need to look at our phone service, because some of our phone services, they are gradually, like our PRI circuits and our T1 circuits, and our POTS, plain old telephone service lines, they are actually discontinuing that over time.
The discount?
Correct.
Okay.
Where it won't be, will be a non-eligible item.
I guess, I do understand that we're going to, you know, fiber works time-wise and some of these other issues, but just for giggles, are there grants available for any of the other, like for the microwave technology?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Yeah. There, there could be, because it is, from a hardware standpoint, again, with E-rate rules changing, some, E-rate rules changing, that some items that were covered are going away, but that some other technologies that were not covered are now in play.
And when are they changing?
Starting next year. And the details, details were released at the, at the end of last month, and we have some of the information out of it, but we actually have an E-rate consultant within the district that is going to be, provide us a complete overview of how those, how changes impact us. And that'll also impact the planning, our planning process as well.
Okay, so we'll have that information by the time we can get about the other proposals?
Yes, definitely. Definitely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Don. The items two and three under D, Bhavna, I believe, would like to discuss the board representation on the Technology Steering Committee and transition replacement plans for the Director of Finance and Operations, so.
And the first one is just a discussion, and the second, excuse me, number two is just a discussion, and number three, I have a presentation in your packet for you. So number two, I know Don had mentioned that he met with the Technology Steering Committee probably about three weeks ago, and I know Lisa and Mike were there, and then Mary Rose planned on being there. I think just going forward, we'd like to just know how we want to post those, because our goal was to have them as community meetings with board involvement, rather than board meetings with community attending. So if we do, you know, after checking it out with our attorney, to play it safe, we should post it if we know that more than two board members are coming, because then they may be viewed as board members. So I guess I just wanted to get, you know, feedback on, should there be a rotating two people, or should the same two people come and represent, or is that just whoever can make it? I just want to know for consistency's sake, how do we proceed? Because we've had them twice, and I know a couple of people are like, are you going? Are you going? Or do we have three members? I'm only going to come if there's only two. So I just, I wanted to get some consistency and clarity in how the board feels.
Well, I haven't gotten my answer yet from Shelley, but I did want to ask her what the rules are for, whether it's a board committee, whether it's a superintendent committee. And I did, I did clarify her, she does feel that, you know, I thought that if it was a community meeting, some of us could sit in the audience, and I thought I had heard that before, but she says no, she thinks if, you know, it should be limited to two if it isn't posted. So the question is, how do we post it?
Or do we limit it to two? We just do a rotating basis?
Let me ask, I think, has there ever been more than three people who are available to go? Not that I want to say that's going in the future, but.
No, I mean, I, I don't know. I don't, I mean, I think it's just the lock.
We had two meetings and two people come.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, two board members, I'm sorry. Two, we've had two meetings and two board members that come.
You know, I guess what I'd like to do is, if it makes it available to more people to come by posting, then post.
But I do see, I see the point of it being a community meeting, not a board meeting. I mean, there is, it, it can be viewed differently, and I think that that's important, because it was set up kind of as a community meeting with board.
Presence.
Presence. Thank you, Michael. And I do, I do like.
And I think that's important in this particular instance, because that's what we were trying to do, is get that group of tech, knowledge, savvy, smart, community members involved in helping us.
But the drawback in that, too, is I hate to put us in a situation where you say that board members are limited in which meetings they can attend, and what information they have, and I don't want to do that either. I don't anticipate, for instance, that I'll ever go, or I'd understand anything if I went, but that, can we do it as such so that more than two board members can come if they want to hear it, or do something else? I don't know, to make the, whether you record it, to make the information available to all board members, so they can watch it, understand the process, if they have any questions first.
Yeah, isn't, I mean, I do like the fact that it is a community meeting, and that I'd like to continue that. Is there any way, and I guess that's the question for our attorneys, how do we continue that, but still make it available to as many board members who are available to come? There must be a way. I mean, there is such a thing as a superintendent's committee, which is different and operates differently than a board committee, and is that, again, I, like I said, I have.
You've had them in the past, but I can't remember.
Can't we just limit it to two people?
Well, we could, or we'll take, or.
Or right now, we have what, we have two members?
No, I think what the point of the conversation is, is that there's always been kind of three, and we didn't really know how to handle it, and we want to have a good plan moving forward. The last meeting, Mary Rose couldn't go because she, for some reason, and I had interest, but I was not going to attend because she was going to attend, and so I attended because she couldn't. But no.
Yeah, the first meeting, I think I was the only one there for a while, but you had something competing, you had to do the walkthrough in the nurses' office.
So, I mean, I think it's just to have a strategy.
Right, you know what?
Why not? I don't know. I don't like having one board member being on the steering committee, because then, the assumption is, that since this is what the tech committee decide, there's a board member on it, therefore it's okay, and that's what the board, board wants. I just think we go down that path too, too many times, and I, you know, however convoluted the system is, when we send around emails to see who's going and who should not go, you know, fine, we only have two people show up. I'd like the idea that it's a community-led discussion, and community involvement, that way it can be presented for us to take action.
Yeah, I, I trust whoever the two people are, I think it shouldn't be, necessarily be fixed, it could be whoever's available, go, come back, report. I hope, you got, somebody's taking notes at least, so that we have some, you know, accurate, you know, record of it, but I'm fine with just whoever is interested or available.
And again, I'll.
Send their email, find out, you know.
And I'll continue, you know, just following up with Shelley about is there a way to maintain this community meeting, but what do we have to do to have that maximum number of board members?
Well, I think we just continue, like, last month, we provided the summary, basically, exactly what was provided at the meeting.
Right.
We attached in a weekly report. Maybe we add on Rachel's suggestion of videotaping it, or.
Yeah, I mean, and the summary that you did was excellent. So, I mean, I, I think that if the board takes the opportunity to read your summary, and they can't attend, certainly there's questions that come out of that, they could just contact you. I mean, so, I mean, maybe we just continue on as we're continuing, as we've done in the past, and if it becomes that it's all six of us or seven of us want to attend, which does not seem likely. It seems like there's just always that three or whatever, which is the.
It's always on the edge of a third.
Cost, price.
A third person, and for both, both times, it's worked out without.
Right. So let's just continue on, and then if there becomes an issue with it being more than that, we might have to address it differently. But go with that. Okay, and then if you just want to present your presentation.
Okay. What we're really trying to do, I think, district-wide, with all the administrators or staff who present, is have a consistent format. So I apologize for the late update, but we did put all the same information on the packet. So we just try to keep it all at the same PowerPoint template. If some of you want what was on the four packet prior to yesterday, prior to today, I have a hard copy for you, but it's the exact same information, just put it into a PowerPoint presentation. So as we all know, Mr. Zayad has accepted another position in our district, so we find ourselves looking for some type of a transition and a replacement for him in interim. And what I shared here are three different strategies, and what we heard this morning. Microphone, right? So what I share with you are three different strategies, based on what we heard earlier this evening. Our reserves are down. We are spending more money than we are bringing in, so our expenses are higher than our revenue. So we need to look at, as a board and as a leadership team, what specifically we want to do going forward. So if we want to maintain strategy number one, fiscal year, this year, as well as the following year, what does that mean? And that means just kind of keeping things as-is, moving along. It's going to alleviate the sense of anxiety, I think, with the community and staff, that we're not changing, that we're not cutting, that we're not looking at eliminating programs, but we are going to continue to draw down our reserves. Strategy two is maintaining the plan for this year, since we've already committed to some additional staff, hiring our own staff from Ladsy, maintaining the class size, whether it's according to policy or the override policy from last year. But then looking at ahead for next year, for fiscal year 2016, what are some operational things as a board and as a district we want to look at to reduce some costs? And these are just examples, I'm not suggesting them, but just, these are the obvious ones. You know, class size, because obviously that looks at staff, elimination of programs, whatever that may be, optional programs, and then looking at possibly reducing the number of staff for those programs, and also for increasing the class size. And then looking for additional cost savings opportunities for fiscal year 2016. Now, again, that would alleviate some of the stress with community and staff for this year, and then if we hire an experienced person, or have an, excuse me, have an interim experienced person, he or she could help with those strategic and financial planning decisions with the board, and say, okay, here's how we go about doing this, how do we engage some community and staff support? But again, for at least that year, we're drawing down the reserves as a con. And then strategy three, which obviously is the most extreme, is start looking at things right now. You know, looking at operational cost reductions for going forward, class size, elimination of programs, like I said, reducing staff, and doing it for not only next year, but also the following year. The pro is that we start getting some cost savings right now. Con, obviously, it's way too quick, we're not prepared, we haven't talked about it as a board or as a leadership team, and we haven't really communicated with the community on how we're going to do that, and what strategic planning has been involved. So those are the three strategies, looking at as far as financial planning and operational planning for the future. So what are our options we could do for hiring an interim person? We could have an interim director. That person would probably be somebody who's retired or recently retired. The pro is, it could be somebody immediate, and as I've shared in my weekly report, I was contacted by three people through word of mouth, and actually a fourth person yesterday. I didn't include that fourth person's information in your packet, but I will tomorrow, because the packet was already released. But anyway, that would be immediate, somebody could start within the next couple of weeks, even transition with Zach if possible, because they aren't working right now. They have experience, the majority of people, or the majority of experience of the three people, four people, excuse me, I talked to, had over 25 years of experience in financial leadership. The quality of the person, they have the experience in leadership, their knowledge base of school finance procedures, as well as operations, all of the candidates had that. All the candidates also had experience with teacher negotiations, as we know, we're going to be starting that in the fall. Again, strategic planning, what is it that we're going to be doing to reduce costs, and look at some program changes, getting the community involved, what kind of strategic planning do we need? If someone's not working out, it's okay to replace or quickly replace somebody if they're an interim person. So it's not somebody, somebody that we have to hire on with a contract, we can be doing it on a weekly or annual, excuse me, monthly basis or quarterly basis. People that I know, excuse me, the people that I were in contact with, they're also referred to me from known and trusted resources, people within the area, people that have worked in school districts that are similar to ours, and that their superintendents or even our law firm knows these people. And they can also help with the transition of hiring a permanent employee, if that's the route that we decide to go. So if we have that person in place for the next three to six months, they can help with when we decide as a, as a board, when we want to post that position for a more permanent position, if that's the route that we go. The cons are that they're not a district employee, so they're not going to be here every day. They'd be here two to three days a week, depending on when and how we need them. Most of the, the three out of the four candidates that I met with are available for 100 days. There's one candidate who's started in a position, kind of doing something temporarily, and he said that he'd have about 75 days if we hired him after September 2nd. So. So, we'd work out from now until possibly like June 15 or June 30th, how many days, what does a school year look like, looking at their personal calendar, and on average, it'd be about two to three days a week, about eight days a month. Option B would be to hire an interim accounting firm with an interim director, so that would be somebody who would give us daily support, somebody with a senior-level accountant with 10 years of experience, that would allow us to maintain daily operations. We could use that interim director to help with the teacher negotiations and the strategic planning, so it's kind of a balance of both, that you have somebody here every day doing the accounting, and the day-to-day kind of operations financially, but then you could use that interim director more for the leadership, organization, and planning pieces. The cons for that are, we may not get the consistency with the long-term planning, the operational support of having someone here, you know, the interim director possibly would be here maybe one or two days a week, depending on what their availability would be, and to offset the costs of that senior-level accountant. We wouldn't have that direct leadership and oversight, or those experiences. The daily support wouldn't have that school finance experience, this would be somebody with an accounting background, they wouldn't have as much experience in schools or school districts, they wouldn't have the teacher negotiation or the strategic planning, and they wouldn't be able to help with the transition to hire or replace a director, if that's what we're deciding to do in the future, or in the immediate future. And then option C is to go out and hire somebody immediately, we would still need, in the interim, an interim director. We'd hire a direct employee, you know, we'd figure out what kind of experience that we need, obviously, the more experience that we want and request, the higher the cost would be in salary, what type of, you know, person we want, we're looking for, we'd obviously look for somebody with high quality, look for somebody with some leadership experience, knowledge of school finance, and procedures and operations, teacher negotiations, as well as strategic planning. When I talked to two superintendents who just recently, one of them who referred their retired business manager to me, and one of them who just went through the process last year, said that it took six to eight months from the time they posted to the time they hired, just because of the candidate pool and what they were looking for, too, and they were districts within West 40. Timing of postings, right now, after talking to IASBO, which is the Illinois Association of School Business Officials, it's not a good time to post, August is not a good time to post to get somebody that's looking for somebody, something long-term, or somebody with experience. So again, you know, we need to get someone in here now, the timing of the six to eight months to hire someone, on average, the timing of the posting is just not being good, and then, we just need to distribute responsibilities and quality if we're going to do that right now, it's just who gets to do what of what Zach is doing. So, that would be some of the costs that we'd have to divide, or, excuse me, some of the cons that we'd have to divide up.
Is, is your recommendation always to have a direct employee going forward after this interim period? That would seem to me what we need, we need a full-time person, five days a week, three, three nights a month, you know, here, as opposed to one to two days, and firms, and, you know, different things like that.
RB makes it work with a, with an interim, three days a week, is it? Is that what it does? And again, I'm suggesting that meets our needs. Another option, which Steve Humphrey mentioned, well, not an option, but what some people do, to deal with the limitation in numbers of days that you have with retirees, is maybe for half of the year, you work with one full-time, and then half a year with another, so I'm just mentioning that, but I suppose that at any point, where particularly if we're going through negotiations, and we need somebody to, you know, crunch numbers, or, you know, guess of different options, I suppose we can kind of move to that strategy midstream, I suppose.
And one other thing he mentioned that wasn't on here, sorry, Lisa, were you going to say something?
No, go ahead, I was just going to say, your next slide, kind of-
Yeah, we talked through that, but he also said, we can work with his firm to hire somebody, that we don't have to hire somebody directly, we can hire-
Well, in other words, he would serve as a temp firm, and they would manage the-
Correct, who's he, Steve?
Steve, we met with Steve today, so I apologize, yes, so his firm, it would be option A, but hiring option A through his firm.
Yeah, but either way, we would, we would probably pay that interim, if they worked, if we didn't work it through temp agency, we would do it more like we did with Peggy King, where we do pay them on a 1099, and we would have a contractor scope of service agreement, which is, I think-
Right.
Right, I was going to say, as far as doing one half the year, one half the other, do the split, like we did with Peggy, Patty, or they went, they did two and two, right? Or two and a half and two and a half?
They did like two days and three days.
Right, something like that.
They alternated, and they shared a day.
Okay.
So it's going to take us six to eight months to find somebody permanent, right?
That is what the two superintendents who just went through this process told me, and they did it at a more opportune time.
Yeah.
They did it in October, November, and they started the posting and appointed someone in April and May, not at this time of year.
Yeah, but, but if we post, I mean, the post could be up for the next six months, right? I mean, it's not just a post that's going to be up for two weeks, I mean, we're going to keep it up as long as, as we need to find somebody.
Right.
Right?
But I'd like to also define, once we define where we're going, define the process for posting and hiring someone, if that's what we decide to do.
Well, what do you mean, if, if we decide, I mean, I, aren't we in the agreement that we're going to always have a full-time?
Well, maybe not.
Not necessarily, high school's been getting along now for, what, two, three years in their arrangement?
Hard-time guy.
With the acting, with the-
I don't, I don't know if I-
Well, the, her last slide kind of has three options, why don't you let, present the last slide, and then I think that will help.
So, I went through each option's, the cost, and then the timeline, so option A, if we hire a interim director, the costs are 600 to 750 a day, depending on their experience, again, that was for 100 days, and they would fluctuate between two to three days a week, the timeline would be post after tonight's meeting immediately with IASBO, and then also out on IASA, if that's what we want to do, that we're looking for an interim person. From Wednesday, which is tomorrow, through next Friday, the 15th, we would review resumes, and then the week of 8/18 to 8/22 that week, two board members and myself could interview the candidates that we, you know, desire from those resumes, and then they can begin on 9/2, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day, and possibly earlier, if that's, I know Zach's last day is the 22nd, so figuring out some type of a transition plan. And the three out of the four candidates are available sooner than 9/2 that I spoke to, which would, there is a week between, there's a week of 8/25 to 8/29, so if we wanted to start early, we could. And then option B is hiring the interim accounting firm with the interim director, and that would be 600, 6 to 750 a day for the director, we'd maybe use him 50 days, one to two days a week, again, for more higher-level operational leadership things, maybe with teacher negotiations and strategic planning, and then, the one firm that we looked at was $62 an hour, and I just based it on 40 hours a week for 52 weeks, the average cost of that interim account, a higher level, excuse me, senior-level accountant would be $130,000 on average, but if we used them for the whole year, and obviously, we wouldn't be using them for 52 weeks, but I just based that salary on that. The timeline, again, would be post immediately, for the interim director, we'd contact the temp agency for the interim director, once we hired, excuse me, we would contact the temporary agency, once we hired the interim director, so we'd put the director in place, and then let he or she determine what kind of level, or what kind of person they want, if they want the account firm, if that's what the board agreed to.
Are other districts doing that, hiring an accountant with not, with, not with school business certification or experience?
I haven't heard, I haven't asked that question, but I don't know of anybody who has, and this was just a suggestion that came from a board member, so I just wanted to include that in, so you could see.
When you talk about an accountant, accountant, who are you, is it like with Robert Half?
It was with Robert Half, yes.
Half, okay.
Yes.
I think the thing is to maybe have an analyst on staff, it does sound kind of expensive to me, at 130,000 a year, but, because that's what you'd pay for, that, not all that much more for a full-time business manager, but it was interesting what you meant, just kind of shifting a little bit, what you had mentioned about people you talked to, how long it took them to hire somebody, because of the candidate pool, and that was actually something Steve Humphrey mentioned, that actually, with an interim, you get a very experienced person, and they are a lot harder, because they're retired, it's a lot higher, harder to hire somebody with that experience level, if you're actually going to try to get a full-time person, you may end up getting, you know, somebody at some stage of career development, and, you know, I thought that was interesting, and pretty much, that's what your context said, it took a long time to find.
So was this the level that they're looking at for 68, that it took 68 months?
Yeah.
Was that 90 to 110? Or is it higher?
I just put those down, because I looked at just some average salaries, so to get somebody with more experience, you're looking at 120 to 100, excuse me, 125 to 150,000 a year, for someone maybe starting out, you're looking at 90 to 110,000.
My question is, for the, for the district you were talking to, that said it took six to eight months, what level were they looking at?
They were looking at the more experienced.
The more experienced.
Yes, someone with 10 to 15 years, because they were replacing two people who retired, so they wanted to bring someone, and that was kind of a lot.
So they had a higher stand, a higher level of need?
Yes.
So we've, we've gone from the past superintendent, being, being the superintendent and business manager, and HR, and all-in-one, right, essentially, and I think, I think this year, we've, we've moved in the direction of having a full-time business manager, and I, I think that's what we need, is a full-time business manager, I think interim is, is in, in every scenario, right, that we always, we need somebody that could start soon, but I think our goal is a five-day-a-week, three nights-a-month person, that we can ask all of these management reports, and all of this stuff that we've kind of grown to, to want and demand from, from, from this person, and I don't think we're, I don't think we should go down the road of a two-to-three-day person, it just doesn't seem right with a $20 million organization.
I'm not sure we need to make that decision right now, we are going to have to have an interim, no matter what, and even if we start looking for a full-time person, they will not start until next school year. I mean, that's basically, if you're going to, you know, get somebody who's currently employed, they have a contract from July 1 to July 1, so I think-
Is that a requirement? I mean, is that state law?
No.
That you can't start someone January 1st, 2015?
Oh, you could, sure.
You could, but they're available.
Right, if they-
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if they're available, if someone happens to move in, into the state, and-
Maybe somebody's taking a sabbatical in Costa Rica, you know, and took six months off, or something.
Those are different reasons why they could be available.
You know, there's opportunities, always.
I think in the interest of time, and what we've been doing, and based on our last conversation, I think everyone kind of is leaning towards option A, I don't think that's any surprise, so I like to propose that we pursue option A, and then talk about the replacement person, you know, in October, November, post for that position, but I think we'll have enough time to see how this person does on two or three days a week, to see and explore Rachel's option of going with someone part-time, or posting for, for full-time, we'll have a little bit of, of time before we make that decision.
And we may not have that option, we may have to continue on an interim level if we don't find someone that's going to meet our needs.
That's why, you know, I honestly, why not, you know, we hire an interim person right now, we post, we still post the position, and say, this is for, you know, let's say January 1st, you know, we're going to go through this, based upon our experience in interviewing people, it's like a two, three-month process.
If you say, you know, why would you say January-
So, you start now, August.
Right.
You know, October, you're going to be looking to hire someone, get them to accept in October, approve it in November, you're already in, you're ready to go in January.
If you find someone in January.
Right, right, if, but as, as a safety net, you have this interim person.
Right, it's rolling, your, his process is rolling.
I like that idea, David.
Started now, and then you, if you don't mind, you just keep going.
You post, you post sooner than later for the permanent position, and you see what you, you get, and you can always change the January 1st to June 30th, you know, if you need to.
And to make it attractive to, to the interim person, you know, you say, we're guaranteeing you at least three, four months, or, you know, to the end of the year, or something to that.
I just don't want to get into the thing where we have to have one interim person go on to another interim, and, like, three interim people this, this next school year.
Yeah, I feel interim to permanent, right?
But interim, because you'd have to have two to cover the 100-day, to cover the whole week, I mean.
Yeah, the 100-day issue, and, and that whole thing is-
But I, I kind of agree, too, I mean, it depends on the person.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't really assess that without the person being here.
Yeah, I was going to say, part of the thing I'm, I'm, you know, kind of excited about having an experienced interim person in here, is they might be able to help us assess our needs, and you really shouldn't have to have a full-time business manager pulling management reports, so it should almost be, I don't want to say semi-automated, but, I mean, they, to some degree, you ought to be able to have-
I think it's a full-time, I'd argue that it's-
I'm not saying it's not a full-time job, I'm not saying-
So, to sum it up, we're going to work against hiring an interim soon, Plan A, like you have here.
We all want to hire an interim person, yeah.
Right, and then we're going to post and see what we get.
I would like to hire, I would agree with option A, go with option A, post tomorrow for an interim, let that person get in here for three to four weeks, transition, assess what we have, and say, okay, here's where I think, when we should post. My recommendation would be October 1, post October 1, and affect, you know, to start January 1, February, whatever, most people, if they're leaving a school district, are going to be looking for something July 1, so I think that, to start.
Start.
Well, why don't we just wait and see what this person-
Right.
How it goes, because it's, like I said, because the high school's making it work, and I've asked them about it, and they're paying actually less than they are for full-time employee, and I think that at this stage of the game, we've added so much staff, I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards it, because it's kind of nice to have somebody you're not committed to, if they don't work out, boop, go, and go to the next person, if need be, but at least it's nice to see, let's see if it works, having the experienced person only three days a week, because then we'd save money versus having a full-time person. Let's just see.
So, okay.
So, we're moving ahead with option-
A.
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 Right?
Yeah, and then probably posting in October.
I like that idea, October's going to be here very quickly.
Yeah.
Okay, so, can we have some quick updates on these five things?
Can I ask that, why do we need an update on enrollment report, when we're going to be talking about enrollment in the special?
Well, I guess I would like to have an update on the four, and then discuss the management reports and how to proceed.
Okay.
I don't know who's doing the updates, are you doing them now?
Uh, I could.
Okay, roll.
Employee relations budget, I believe was in the, in the workbook.
It's under F, it's under item F, Zach.
Under item F.
Yeah, employee, employee, this was, um-
I'm sorry.
Your request for, request for management reports?
It's under E, right?
E.
It's under E.
Right?
I have, I'm sorry, under F, employee food expenses? I'm in, I'm in electronic right now, did it get changed?
Oh, I have employee relations budget under E1.
Yes, I'm sorry, it is under E1, but under five management reports, the attachment is the same as employee relations.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sort of, but, can you give us the bottom line?
E1, yeah, E1 and F.
Just give us the bottom line.
Bottom line is, we have a-
We know what the budget was, which is-
Budget of 18, we actually spent almost 16,000, we, we paid this year's recognition dinner, this year, if you pull out last year's recognition dinner, for a relevant budget.
So the 16 includes last year's and this year's recognition dinner?
No, no, 16 includes this year.
Only?
Well, what, but, but do we have?
There's an attachment, but I don't have it live, so I don't know.
Did it get added late, was that, or is it, was it here yet?
It was added late, correct.
Okay, so, is it itemized?
That would have taken a little more time, what I did here, I broke them up between catering foods and food to- What I did here, I broke them up between catering foods and foods from the cafeteria. I got them by dollar amount, we can fill in the itemized.
All right. My understanding was the employee recognition dinner was, or it was the cocktail party or the, was it about, what, $4,000 to $5,000?
Yes, it was.
Probably that number. It's the 4212.
4212, yes.
And what are the numbers in red?
Last year's recognition.
Okay, so those came out.
That was that.
It's all this year's, this is because of whatever.
Okay, all right. So I guess the only other question I have, where would be the expenses for, I'm sorry, institute days?
Yeah, institute days.
For example, are you talking about the catering we done for like?
The institute day. Food. But which amount is that?
Well, it would be the larger amount. We had all the, I mean, it was 29.66.
Okay.
We didn't do food for institute days. We just did that, the bagels at the first day. Other than that, I don't think we did food at any of the institute days.
So how about, how about last August, though, the first couple of days? I don't know if you call those institute days, but there was, there was a, there was a catering bill that came in that was, that was kind of hefty, I believe, if I remember right.
There was breakfast and lunch for that one.
Not lunch.
But it was, but still, it was, wasn't it, we're, we're talking $7,000 to $8,000?
There was, what, $5,000? Now, as I recall, was the whole institute day with the, the acting trip roughly around $11,000?
No, the, the, kind of, it was $5,000, but I, we did not provide lunch.
We did breakfast.
We did breakfast, yes.
So you would like this itemized, I'm sensing, versus, I mean.
You know what, I think somewhere along the line, back in, what, in, was it September, October, we had the.
This was an issue.
Well, I would like to, like the big, big amounts, and again, it's, yeah, I mean, but I mean, we, we did, we did have it back in September, October, what we spent on institute day. What, and the other miscellaneous amounts, I don't know what they're for, but.
Well, most of them are, what did you say?
You need a date, and you need some kind of category of what this is related to. What is $43.79 related to? Is it an institute day? Is it a employee recognition? Is there something?
Is there any way to pull this out of like the system, Zach, I mean, we're not trying to.
It's, it's through the system, and we, we'd have to open up each account and look at each invoice, and just.
It's all manual.
It's all manual, and we're dealing with registration and all that right now, so.
I, I would just guess if we know what, what institute days were, and, and we know what, and we know what the employee recognition dinner, that would get us to, you know, hopefully, you know, 80% of the amount, or.
Do, do the institute days include the couple of days before school starts? That's called institute day?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this would, would not include the entertainment for the, or the acting trip, right? Because it's not food. Okay. That, that would be in purchase services, right?
Correct.
Correct.
The entertainment?
Okay.
Like a speaker?
Yes.
Yes. Can you, okay, are we good with that? We'll do follow-up with that, and it'll be itemized into big buckets.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to have people to go to a lot, but one other question, are these all in, open book to one account?
Yes. Yes, they are.
Is it district level?
Yes.
Okay. Are we good with that? Nurses, Hauser Roof, sod, sod. Looks like it's done and wrapped.
Is 99% completed. We just had to buy cotton and a curtain and a desk, and we can have that set up for, for use at the beginning of the school year. Hauser Roof should be completed. Arguing weather, weather issues should be completed by Friday. The side, the side was laid down, and again, unfortunately, we had some tire tracks out there. But it's been repaired and taped off and.
That's all you can do.
So are paying double?
No.
That's nice of them.
Not this time.
It's fortunate.
Real estate?
Real estate? Do I want to get into numbers and all that?
Just a quick update would be good.
Quick, quick update, I made an offer for the property, 74 Woodside. They countered, but it's still too high, and I, I don't think it's worth what they're asking.
There, now there were two lots.
Them sold.
One of lots is gone already.
One lot's gone, so it's only one. They were side by side?
Yes.
So the, the, the larger lot is still available?
Yes. It's, it's almost.
And what would we do with that?
We could either make it a parking lot, an administrative building, a kindergarten center.
Whatever we want to do with it.
Are there a lot of zoning restrictions on it?
I, there's a special use permitable need from the village, but they indicated that.
Due to the crossing guard situation, it'd be very amenable towards our.
Due to the crossing guard situation.
Yeah, I know, that's what I was thinking. Didn't want to say it.
So is this something we, we can discuss in closed session, pricing and what we might be willing to, to spend and so forth?
It is an exception. I don't know if we have the language in Burnaby.
We don't have the language. We have to do it at the next. Is anybody carrying their little?
To be able to talk in closed session, you have to specifically read the specific.
I see. Well, can we talk about it now, then? Can we talk about what your counter was?
No, I don't, I don't want someone, oh, hey.
You don't want to.
So that's the brief update. We'll have to put that.
When do we talk about it, then? August 19, closed session?
No, I can't, let me Google the language.
Yeah, yes, yes. Traffic study.
Traffic study was, finally finished the report. We're going to meet with the village, I believe.
August 18.
August 18.
Okay. And then management reports.
Me, so.
And I'm an hour over my time. Oops, tried.
I have the language. For the closed session?
Yeah, I just need to find.
Next meeting.
There was an Excel version of one of these put on the special, or maybe two of them,